Good evening and welcome to the Chaska City Council meeting for Monday, August nineteenth, twenty twenty four. We'll call the meeting to order at seven o'clock. Please stand and join me in pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome, welcome. All right, uh, at least we call roll, please.
Here, here.
Yep. Here, here. All right, next is adopting the agenda. Are there corrections or additions to the agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, did I do?
Motion by Councilmember Hatfield.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Grah. Discussion. Hearing that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign. Motion carries. Next, we're in visitor presentation and tonight, we have the Growth Through Opportunity Program recap, so I'm gonna turn it over to the fine gentleman that ran it. I'll leave it up to those guys. They can tell you, tell you who they are.
Well, first we wanted to say any crying you hear in the chambers is related to the mayor, so.
It's usually the mayor crying.
Go try it if you need to, just head outside.
Well, you got the crying room back there? All right, I'm in. Finally.
All right, go ahead.
Well, yeah, um, Martin Gonzalez, I'm the community outreach officer for the Chaska Police Department. Um, and so we, for the last eight weeks, um, we've had our Growth Opportunity Program, uh, visit our various departments through the city of Chaska, through the city of Chaska, um. And I just want to say thank you to the department heads for making this all happen, as well as Alex and Paula from Empower and Flujen, who, um, without them as well, we wouldn't be able to have this program. Um, so, um, the other persons is Ellie Snow and Carson Harris. Um, thank you both for, uh, being a part of this program. I hope you guys had fun. Um, I hope you guys learned a lot, um, the last eight weeks or so. That being said.
Yeah, so we got a little recap video and then we'll bring the, uh, GTO and it turns up afterwards, but, uh, Christine, you know how to press play. There's kind of just some different places they land.
That is a video.
It's my first day.
Mary, you might remember this day.
Remember this day?
I get the wrong suit for a little bit.
Oh, there we go. Right with that.
I'm here today where we helped with the people. They're dying now and, and I did, I made, made the vision. What my eyes will see, when it fades, it's before me, I can only imagine.
All right. All righty, didn't I have a Carson and Ellie doing this up here?
Uh, before we start, family, you are welcome to come anywhere. You want to go to take pictures. Don't feel you gotta be behind them. Please feel free to come up here and behind us wherever you want to go. So, your name.
Yes, sir.
So I do have one question I think that they get asked every year in our Growth Through Opportunity is, which department did you guys enjoy meeting with the most?
Um, I, I happen to say the, the budget department and especially the police department, so.
That's good.
I thought I heard Carson say administration.
See him shaking his head? No, not a chance.
Police, all right.
What about when you were the mayor? You were the mayor for the day. What about that?
It's, it's, it's turning back to me right now. I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm going to be remote, you know? I'm very happy.
That's good.
Helen was a very good mayor. She made sure we all talked into our mics and she got that approved right away and everything, so. Ellie for mayor.
We have, uh, some certificate of achievements here for both of you. So Carson, there's yours. Ellie, here's yours. And then I think Martine's got something else for you, too.
Also have one of our, our Chaska Police Department challenge forms that I want to give to each and every one of you for participating in this program and finishing it. To our cadets, uh, Ellie Snow and Carson Harris. Congratulations. Congratulations. John.
Hold on, after this presentation, we gotta take any, any questions the council might add for us, so. Just gotta hold on here for a minute.
I, and, and I also wrote a, a speech where, uh, everyone. Good evening. My name is Ellie Snow. It is my pleasure to be here for the city of Chaska, Minnesota. I, I am glad, uh, myself to be a cadet. I, I have experience to help us when we need it, especially problem solving skills. And, and lots of exciting challenges, challenges, activities and jobs. Of, always looking for someone to, to be part of. But, that was, this is pretty good. But my friend, that told, told me to go to, but nine, one, one, if this place is, it is to not be nervous or scared because they wanted to keep me safe. And also, Martine, thank you very much that I came in this program from really shaky because you retired. I will never forget this moment, uh, uh, God, plus all the people, uh, uh, who came to some great with, with us. Thank you and, and have a good, a great night. Thank you all so much. I love you, 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 the camera.
Oh, no.
Well, thank you for that. Now, those were wonderful words. Uh, they're greatly appreciated and I'm so glad that you guys had fun. Is there anything? You kind of already were to know what was your favorite department. What was your favorite thing you got to do? What was the favorite thing out of all the different groups? What do you think was the most fun?
What Carson said.
Well, ask any.
Do, do, do you like something better than, than that?
I have a question.
No administration.
It's just not fair.
I have a question for Ellie. I heard you were teaching all the stats and sign language.
Yes, I, I do.
Were they good students?
Yes, they were very good.
Even Kevin?
And, and Kevin too, yes.
What was your favorite sign that you taught them?
Um, I remember, remember what I taught them to sign was venue. Uh, and, and I, I just started right now.
Well, staff, what, what, what sign did you learn? Does anybody remember when you?
No, thank you.
They remember thank you.
What was work again? Worked this.
And I, I was looking at my, 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 um, stickers start to form of these special people. And this is for Palma, she's my Chinese star.
Oh, thank you.
Keep it. I, I, there's a.
Thank you, Ali.
Anything else? Ellie, Carson?
Carson, you want, you wanna? Got anything you wanna say or not?
I'm looking.
You're my kind of guy. I like it. I like it.
Uh, if we can just take a picture with, uh, everyone in front of the council here, that'd be nice. What do you think?
Yes, sir.
All right.
I'm gonna keep my eyes open this time.
Anyone else who wants to take a picture or me in the picture, go right.
Sitting down.
Out of my map.
I think, don't we sit down or?
We're standing for the last one.
You might need to stand.
I might have to stand. We might have to. I got the tallest guy in front of me.
You good?
Yep.
Your way out.
All right, which camera first?
Um, just look, look somewhere a little bit further. I'll get out of the way. All right. Go right down the center.
You want to bring their families up? I, I don't, it's up to you. Families want to come up?
The families, Ethan.
Sorry, my bag was cut on my wheels. For off summer, no map.
Ethan, just, you guys, and, 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 and just say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I say thank you, mayor.
She wrote that all by herself.
She did a very nice job. I was getting this meat. Could she write for me?
Very cool.
Say thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ellie.
Ellie, thank you.
Thank you, Carson.
My folks are still gathered and I, I just like to, uh, say thank you to all of our employees because I, I think they do such a wonderful job with this, with, through the Growth Through Opportunities programming. I, I think everyone has such a great time doing it and I, like I said, I just want to say thank you to all the employees because without them being willing to be part of this program, it's nothing. So, uh, thanks to all of our employees and thank you to families to bring them in.
I think the two youngest, uh, participants, audience members fans.
Yeah, yeah. We'll just pause here for a couple of minutes of the.
Meeting adjourned?
No. This is kind of like Lutheran church. They grow a little up. All right, um, next I have on my visitor's agenda is the VFW and Legion commanders. Is anyone here representing either organization tonight? Okay. Um, we'll bypass that. Without all that, I'll ask, is there anyone else here on, that wants to speak on their visitor presentation, not an agenda item? All right, not seeing anything, so we'll move on to, uh, item six, which approving the previous meeting minutes and that's from eight, five of twenty twenty four. Again, if there are cor, are no corrections or additions, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion.
Motion by Councilmember Hubbard.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield to again approve previous minute, meeting minutes from eight, five. Discussion. Hearing that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign. Motion carries, uh, moves us on to item seven, which are, um, consent items that don't necessarily need a conversation, but definitely need our vote. Um, but if any or all can be, uh, brought forward and discussed.
I have one item. Um, I have a question on item seven F, the, uh, conservation, um, signs. Um, so the conservation, conservation signs talk about, um, the wooded steep slope, but the signs don't actually say anything about like removing trees or any, or cutting down trees. Would that be something that should be part of that signage? Because even we have a conservation easement to say that trees shouldn't be cut down, tree shouldn't be removed, but yet it says nothing about trees.
Maybe the thing to do, I appreciate your question, would be to look at, you know, you know, what sort of sign, maybe put another similar situation and try to reach for its consistencies. I, I just, I don't know off the top of my head exactly. Um, but I think what we could do is have a developer work, um, you know, staff and make sure it's like, it's like.
Okay, I think the general, and if the, and I think my thought is that even if like we had signs before that didn't mention trees, there should be probably a new standard or consistency to say, I mean, because the whole point is it's conserving trees and if homeowners don't know that treat, the point of this preservation is to preserve trees and preserve this trees on wooded steep slopes and they start cutting them down. The signs kind of need to say something about it because that's kind of the intent, right? Yeah, that, yeah.
Yeah, I think, uh, one thing to remember is that we have a number of easements within town that aren't related to steep slopes. And so, um, I, I hear what you're saying about, uh, making them consistent. Um, I mean, it's, it's really looking at the intent of what we're trying to accomplish as opposed to, you know, is it, is it because of steep slopes or is it because they were just preserved as conservation easement? So, I, I I think we can definitely come up with something.
Yeah, that sounds good. Yeah, because I think, you know, overall, we make a great effort to make sure that in the planning process and development process that we strive to protect those trees. So want to make sure that, you know, new, not just the homeowners who move in who may be aware of it because they purchased the property, but subsequent homeowners also have that visibility too, because they may just not know, because there's turnover in our neighborhood and people don't necessarily know about some easements just because they don't know and didn't go through the two hundred pages of title documents, you know? So.
Yeah.
Definitely. Cool. Well, thank you.
I had a question on seven F. No, seven G. Um, and it might have said this in here. So this is the twenty twenty four, is that we've already got some Safe Street dollars. This is the next step, the next one for this year. That's what I thought, but I want to make sure.
Yep.
Yeah, so to clarify, uh, we did do, we got dollars for St. Rose to school.
Yeah.
Uh, we did that plan.
Isn't that, and that's different than safe? Oh, okay.
Yeah, that was.
So St. Rose and Safe Street Roads are two, and okay.
The one we got at Clover Ridge though was Safe Streets. Correct?
No, so we, we did a St. Rose to school, uh, plan, which is now centered around Clover Ridge, you know, towards the end of this year. Uh, and that was through St. Rose to school, Clover Ridge, through Midnight. The safe streets and roads for all. Is, uh, tapping into dollars, uh, came about through the infrastructure, the, the, you know, federal level infrastructure program. Um, and so out of that, there's dollars for doing comprehensive plan, it's the the rural street network, um, across the community. So can you get it county levels or regional levels? Um, but in order to then tap into it, line ourselves up to the most competitive, to go for dollars, um, for differential improvements on roads, you got to find ways first. So going for this grant will give us, uh, the dollar for that program. There is a match involved, but Midnight has another pool of dollars that you have to pay for that match. So effectively, we can go through this process and identify those priority areas for improvements. Uh, we then set ourselves up well to be competitive for grant dollars for. So some of the things that we anticipate would be, uh, you know, pedestrian oriented improvements that hopefully, well, they, they, will be aligned with the Viking backbone we have. There should be overlap there. Uh, but then there's also opportunity to get traffic improvements, so.
Related, because you brought it up, and I've, in the last two weeks, traveled it quite a bit. The roundabout in Clover with the plastic.
Yeah.
Does that get evaluated if it's been successful? Like, okay, I mean, it's curious, because I, man, there's, I mean, I guess it's successful because it's someone's hitting the plastic piece versus someone in the middle. But man, those plastic pieces are bent over frequently.
Yeah.
Well, they've been hit a lot. I guess we've witnessed them being hit.
Yeah, I mean, it gets better than a person and better, you know, especially, I just, it's.
But I've seen them replaced too.
Yeah, correct.
Pop back up.
I've seen them down and then I've seen them up.
Over time, they all pop back.
Well, I saw, I saw a moving van go through there when we had a meeting out there and they all pop back up. Uh, so I thought that's the way they were designed to operate, but I don't know.
They are, but they also, at a certain point break.
Well, I figured that.
So I guess at a high level, just, we don't think into too many details, but just at a high level, whether the criteria for success of that, to say that, yeah, it's successful.
That roundabout?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's intended to be temporary.
Yep, yep.
So as we get into winter and all the works crews are preparing for that, those, those plastic posts come down. Uh, but the intention there was to, to test out what it'd be like, um, to try and narrow that roundabout, slow down traffic, so that would be the objective. Um, but I think as we're going to be starting a school here, about two weeks, um, that's going to be an opportunity to really get some feedback from the crossing guards, uh, from the kids who are lost, preschool parents who are helping with the wrong play. Um, and understand, you know, how they're feeling, because that was really the intention was to, um, you know, make that route, this roundabout at a certain point, that's something that we learned in working schools, that line process. Um, that takes a lot of, uh, you know, staffing and oversight, crossing guards who are actually teenagers, dedicating additional time to, uh, to make sure the schools are getting through that roundabout, or the students are getting through that roundabout safely. Um, so that's, that was the intention. Um, so we'll be able to get some good observations and help school, uh, coming back up to see if that, you know, widening those medians gives a little bit of a refuge for us, crossing across each lane. It's a place for the, um, the crossing guards to safely stand where they, they kind of just sit in the middle of the door. Uh, and, and hopefully facilitates just safer getting to school crossings. So it's there temporarily, um, that's a whole other grant, uh, application opportunity, uh, maybe lining up as well. Try and go and get money to actually do a permanent change to that roundabout, uh, but it. Try and go and get money to actually do a permanent change to that roundabout, uh but it wouldn't be, you know, plastic. It's sticking up, it'd be realigning the curb, um you know, doing it. With engineering minds that it is gonna be able to accommodate the turn or any stuff and all that kind of stuff, but um. It is, it is much wider than it really is to be, to be able to accommodate traffic.
Yeah, cool, thank you.
Yep.
I got a, I I got a couple of questions, uh. One regarding the auditors, it's just our normal rebidding and. How do you determine a better auditor than another one? I I know Noel's here, so I'm gonna put him on the spot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um this, uh we just finished a five-year engagement with MMKR. Typically, we do an RFP for services every ten years. Um it's a lot of work to go through the RFP and they need the really the five-year period to recoup their initial setup costs. So typically after the RFP, we do five years and then we ask for a renewal proposal for the second five years. Which gets us to that ten-year cycle for the RFP. So we do not exclude the incumbent auditor as a part of the consideration process. When we do the RFP, um we have been with MMKR for twenty-five years at this point. They've been flexible with us when we've wanted to extend for various reasons. Um we went through the RFP process and it came down to really two finalists. Um MMKR, who is the incumbent, as well as CLA, who is the recommendation to go forward with at this point. Both firms scored very highly on a technical uh basis. Um CLA was actually a little bit lower on the fee side of things. We weighted eighty percent on technical and twenty percent on fees when we sort of evaluate internally. So that we go through an objective process and review those proposals as a part of coming to a recommendation.
On those lines, Mayor, if you don't mind if I ask a question, does it make it more work for you guys working at the new firm? Like, is there gonna be more staff time because you've maybe gotten used to the firm you were working with? This is a new firm, I mean, I'm just, that's.
No, that's a part of the normal audit process. I'd say the first year is typically more work for both the auditor and staff. But it's also a chance for a fresh set of eyes to come in and challenge us in new areas and new ways. Part of the things we look at is, is this proposed firm um knowledgeable with municipal government audits? Are they knowledgeable? In a city like Chaska that has an electric utility and has nine different enterprise fund operations? Are they familiar with the debt issuance that we do so that they have some understanding and competencies in those areas? Another area that we looked at is um their experience and their staff training with federal single audits as we continue to have that on a regular basis. Year over year. So we do expect more work, but that's a part of what we anticipate with the change and they anticipate as well. And we had actually discussions about how to plan that first year.
Alright, thanks, Joel. Yeah, I was just, because I always say, as long as I've been here, it's been the same and I I wondered if there. And it's probably not a bad thing to change auditors after you, after a few years, just to make sure. Everything's, you know, we don't have to worry about that uh either and. Thank goodness, we've always done very, very well on the audit, so that's good. Thank you. Um and I have one other question on the, on the. The Carlson Bluff final, it says fourteen lots. But I'm only counting like eleven, and I know there's that big piece, and I thought. The family was gonna have one lot in there. Is there gonna be more than one lot in there? Unless I'm looking at that wrong, but I I've only counted eleven.
Freaking out.
I count fourteen. There's eleven around, yeah.
Fourteen, and there's three in the center.
Three in the center. Did you miss the three in the center?
Oh, I'm not seeing the ones in the center. Yep, that's what it is, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there's fourteen.
I kept counting outside. I didn't even realize that.
Sure. And Mayor, the the lot that you're talking about with the the family.
Yep.
Uh that's on a different person.
Well, that's not, I thought that's on that. That back piece, no?
It it, it is kind of, I guess.
I don't know the direction, I know.
The flat lays out, um as you're looking at it, right, I'm here, but it would be. It's sitting so that upwards north, right, so I'm in a misplat to the. East uh for the right, kind of off the map.
Alright, I, you know, I I'm good. I was wondering if there was subdividing more lots there, but I I missed the three in the center.
Yep.
I did not catch that, so sorry about that. Alright. Uh anyone else on a consent item? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve consent.
Motion by Councilmember Gra.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wong to approve consent. Discussion. Hearing that, all favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign. Motion carries. Alright, we move on to item uh eight, which is our twenty twenty four community survey.
Mayor and Councilmember, the item in front of you tonight is one that uh uh that we do periodically, so. Uh approximately every five to six years, uh we will bring in, uh I still call you decision resources, but. But uh um uh Morris Leatherman Company to. Uh do a statistically sound survey of our residents uh in the community about a number of different issues. Uh we've been doing these surveys going back to, I think nineteen ninety-six was maybe the first one that uh that we did. And then again, like I said, it's been about every five, six years uh since then. Uh two things that I. Three things to me really stand out about uh the the survey and its methodology. Uh first thing is, is that we have been doing it for long enough that we have uh the ability to compare uh. Uh statistical analysis from year to year um from our own survey results. Uh second thing is, it's statistically sound, uh which I think is important. And then the third thing is, uh the Morris Leatherman Company does this very similar survey. Uh around several other municipalities around the Twin Cities, and so it not only gives us the ability to be able to look at ourselves. But also look at ourselves in relation to uh other municipalities around the uh the Twin Cities, so. The last time we completed uh one was two thousand eighteen, so it's actually been six years uh since we did the uh. The last survey. And uh we have Peter Leatherman here, who is gonna go through uh sort of a uh high level. Uh presentation of the uh of the results uh of the survey in the different areas and uh. Unless there's any questions, I'll turn it over to Peter.
Take it away, alright.
All is yours.
It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening and to Matt's point, it's fascinating to look at the time comparison in the community. And just because the charts got too busy, I took out nineteen ninety-six. Uh so I'm, the comparison I went back to was two thousand four. So it's almost a twenty-year window at the look of this community and it really is amazing some of the changes that you have. Um and some things that are just counterintuitive to what we see elsewhere. If we go to the first slide, uh put up the methodology for everyone, so. Everyone's on the same page. We spoke with four hundred randomly selected residents across the community. Of four hundred samples projected with plus or minus five percent in ninety-five out of a hundred cases. Once again. The size of the sample determines the margin of error, not the percent of the population. So four hundred in Chaska, four hundred in Carver County, four hundred in the state of Minnesota is plus or minus five percent. Uh the fieldwork took place earlier this summer between June thirteenth and July eleventh. Uh average interview time was twenty-three minutes. It is a longer survey. We actually had eleven percent stay on the phone with us. For over forty-five minutes on their own volition. Uh community, the story, shall we say. Uh my folders are not paid by the interview, they're paid by the hours, so your points, everyone, and then they have additional uh feedback. You uh you acknowledge that in the conversation. Putting on some demographics, cell phone only households were sixty percent. Landline-only households were eight percent. They still do exist, they're out there. Um and thirty-two percent have both landlines and cellphones. If we continue to the first set of demographics. How long does the person live in the community? We have twenty-eight percent that have been in Chaska for five years or less. Well, we have twenty-three percent over twenty years in the community. The typical resident has lived in this city just short of ten years. So that's really the split is ten years, uh fifty percent above, fifty percent below. Twenty-one percent indicate that they have a person over the age of sixty-five in their house. Forty percent indicate the presence of a child, preschool-aged child, preschooler or infant. Uh seventy-five percent are homeowners, while twenty-five percent are renters. If we continue with the demographics. Uh thirty-one percent are eighteen to thirty-four-year-olds, with thirty-two percent over the age of fifty-four. Typical resident is just over forty-five years old in the community. Seventy-six percent indicated they were white, nine percent African-American, six percent Hispanic with female. Five percent indicated multi-year viracial, and three percent Asian-Pacific islanders. And then the last slide of demographics is the household income first. Uh we had uh forty-six percent at seventy-five thousand or below. We have fifty-one percent at seventy-five thousand or above. So the typical resident median is right at about eighty-two, eighty-three thousand dollars on the scale. Uh two percent more uh women than men, and then you can see the geographic distribution by ward. Uh most residents have no idea what ward they live in. We control that, we know what ward they live in. Um and then I just quantify the sample based on the counter-registered voters, but the numbers works. Um so before I get into the data, any questions on methodology, demographics? Alright. We go to the first slide. And let's just say, I'm gonna do a blanket statement upfront about what's happened in public opinion research. Post-pandemic. Everybody is less enthusiastic about everything. That's kind of a blanket statement. So if something was excellent, it's good. Something's good, it's only fair. If you strongly agreed before, you now agree. There's just less intensity on happiness across the state of Minnesota. And we see it in the very first slide. Um overall, the evaluation of the quality of life of the city. We have ninety-six percent rating it favorably, only three percent say only fair. Uh but the shift is from the excellent to good. You can see it drop from fifty-six to thirty percent. The typical on this across over the last three years. Since, you know, twenty-one, uh when we started coming out of the pandemic, is about a forty percent drop in the excellent rating. So that reflects exactly what we've seen. You don't have what some communities have though. In the good shifting to only fair. You have the law, there's still ninety-six percent favorable. The concern is when people go to the only fair side, or even the poor side. Most people aren't gonna live in a community for a long time if it's only fair. They'll want perhaps to to move. You don't have that whatsoever. So it's still an outstanding rating on the quality of life, there's just less intensity. The norm on the excellent rating before the pandemic was twenty-two percent. It's down to ten percent now. So you're still three times higher of the enthusiastic rating of excellent. It's just down comparatively to what you were before the pandemic. A couple of open-ends before we talk about um things in the survey, what do folks like most? You're going to see, if we just look at this, this is open-ended, they can tell us anything. It is small-town values and attributes is what they value. From the small-town feel to the friendly, peaceful. To the quiet and the the friendly people, quiet and peaceful, schools close to family and friends, parks and trails. We don't get our first quintessential suburban response till we get close to the job, and it's only six percent. Safe and down the list. This community has always valued the small-town feel. Even at a time of a lot of growth in the community. If we go to the next slide and we ask folks, what's the most serious issue? Well, the first thing we look at in this chart, is there anything that hits twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five percent? You have one in three, one in four people coalescing or other response. That's a serious issue off the top of the mind. You don't have anything close to twenty percent. What leads to this? Thirteen percent too much growth. Ten percent high taxes. We're gonna go more in-depth on on taxes in a little bit. Uh but the norm on that right now is about fifteen percent. So it's about half, about fifty percent less than we typically see. And then crime. Everything else single digits. The key uh bar on this chart, because like I said. Is people have spent a lot more time in their community during the pandemic. They've also found a lot more things they dislike. Um and so the nothing, those are boosters. Before the pandemic, the typical metropolitan suburb had about ten percent booster cord. That's down to about six percent right now. Yours is twenty-three percent, and these folks, they see no problems in the city. Uh whether it's from the council to the communications, to services, across the board, they are boosters. Your booster cord is very large at one and four comparatively to what we see now over the past three years since the pandemic.
Quick question. When you ask these two questions, were people only able to give one answer, or were they able to give multiple answers?
People can give as many answers as they want, which is how they get to forty-five minutes to an hour.
Sure.
What we code is the number one answer.
Alright.
So if they say five things, we're coding the first thing on other month. That's the most serious issue for our purposes.
So in this case, if they said nothing, but they said, but wait, there's something else, you'll get the, but wait, there's something, it's okay.
Yep. And we differentiate between unsure and nothing.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
What's scattered?
Illegal cigarette responses that don't uh amount to more than one percent. Uh so I just collapse them down into categories. I mean, there's, you know.
I get it.
Favorite pothole, a favorite truck, they don't, yeah, yes. Alright, the general direction of the community. Overall, do they think the community is headed in the right direction or off on the wrong track? Ninety-three percent say it's in the right direction. Over the last eighteen years, it's below for the wrong track at three percent. Uh the typical on this right now is eighty to about eighteen. Uh so that is extraordinarily vulnerable, people say, on the wrong track. One, the next slide, one uh question that's been very stable for the years. I mean, statistically, there's no change in nineteen years. Is do they feel that Chaska is home or just the place to live? Um it started out at seventy-eight percent in two thousand five. In two thousand twenty-four, it's at seventy-six percent. And this is oftentimes, there's, there's very much a close association with the amount of rental. And if you think back to the demographics, we had twenty-five percent renters in the community. That pretty much lines up then. If you view it as a as home or just a place to live, uh but incredible stability over the years. What about the strength of community identity? Um last time, we were at ninety-one percent, we're at ninety-one percent again. Uh a little bit of a shift, like I said, the shift from excellent to good, but it has not done the spillover into the only fair report. Community identity, the strength of community identity um had issues. I mean, there were just multiple issues during the pandemic. It was hard to get together. Uh for festivals for a couple of years. That impacted how people felt about their sense of community. Um so right now, the norm and the strength of the community is about seventy-eight percent. So you're over ten percent higher. Uh that and very stable going back to where you were before the pandemic. Oh, next chart, do they feel accepted, valued and welcome? Absolutely, ninety-six to two. This next chart to me is amazing. Every time I come out here, it grows this amazing, it is just incredible. You now have more people saying that you Chaska has a small town than you have had at any point since two thousand. Fifty-one percent see the community as a small town, twenty-one percent see it as a suburban community. Twenty-eight percent see it as both. Even in the time of the growth happening. The city has still maintained in the mind, is in the eyes of the community, the small-town values that brought people here. Is what they value most in it, and they still see that. I was doing, this is my thirtieth year of doing this. So I was doing this in the nineties in Woodbury. Right now, nobody sees Woodbury as a small town. Nobody sees Maple Grove as a small town. Nobody sees Plymouth as a small town. Those are suburban communities. You've also been able to put the thread through the eye of the needle. In order to maintain the small-town feel for residents that they value when they move here. Whenever they appear over the course of the years. Let's hear the taxes. What do people think this percentage of the city uh property tax is? Uh keeping in mind, a lot of people have no idea that it's split between the school districts, county, um what have you. Um and so we just asked them to approximate. And what we had on this was. Forty percent was the largest uh uh bar uh with between twenty-one and thirty percent. Uh with between twenty-one and thirty percent. The typical, if we take out the unsure and and do a median, the typical resident thinks it's somewhere probably about twenty-four, twenty-five percent. Uh we did tell folks after the statement. Um that it was thirty-two percent, just so that they were aware that we weren't going to make them atypical. If we looked at the next slide. On their perception of property taxes overall. And I noted in the most serious issue that that was in second place at ten percent, but it was about five percent less than. Uh the perception of property taxes, in two thousand and eighteen, it was thirty-one percent, it moved up to forty-three percent. It's a twelve percent jump. Um but this has much more to do with what's happened since twenty twenty-two. What happened in twenty twenty-two across the state of Minnesota? People got their assessments, their value property was valued at twenty, twenty-five percent more than they were through. I think only about two people in the state of Minnesota realized what that was gonna do to their property taxes. So November fifteenth of twenty twenty-two, it's like somebody flipped the light switch on property tax hostility and went back to where we were in the nineties. Uh with the tax barriers leaving. Um the norm right now, uh the high category is fifty-five percent. So you do have that increase, but you do not have it like other communities across the metro. The high I have over the past eighteen months is the community of Ramsey County at seventy-seven percent in the very high and so high category. That's a tax hostile climate. You're still in a tax sensitive climate, even though you have you have that increase. It's much less than we see across the metro and everywhere else to stay. We asked folks, um. Uh we gave them a intro paragraph. Oh, did I miss? I guess. Uh. Property tax increase, would they support a property tax increase to maintain city services? Absolutely, this is where we are, it's somewhere between seventy and eighty percent across the state right now. People realize now more than ever, it costs more to have the same things. And so people are very supportive of a property tax increase to maintain. But just like everywhere else, the line is the property tax, it is drawn in. A property tax uh increase to main for to improve or enhance city services. So every community has this stark disparity between the maintenance, you have it at eighty. Versus the enhancement, only at thirty-six percent. We read folks uh uh a paragraph uh that explained the facilities improvement plan. And we asked folks, were they aware of it? Uh thirty-six percent indicated that they were aware. Uh that might be very disheartening for people, um that it's thirty-six percent. Your universe is never a hundred percent of this. If you can get sixty percent aware of some sort of process or plan from the city, you're doing a really good job. Keep in mind on election day, take away the presidential year, I mean, people try to forget it this year. Uh but in your typical gubernatorial race or in office election, you don't even have that, people know that there's a law happening. Uh in November, so it's the thirty-six percent. Uh that would be the highly informed, and you'll see this kind of later when we talk about in- information that people have. Uh but we had told them about the planner, do they support it? Absolutely, they support the vision of the council, eighty-four to nine. Um thirty, eighty-three to nine, very strong endorsement from what they've heard. And there was no difference, we acted across staff, if they were aware or not aware, did that change their support? Absolutely, there's no statistic, there's significant difference, so it is a highly supported uh vision of the council. The facilities improvement I can have. Overall assessment on the value of city services? Now, to me, this is the most important question in the survey, because it asks most if you think about the property taxes you pay. And the city services you receive, how do you rate that value? Keeping in mind, one of the inputs, we've had an increase on people's perception on taxes being high. Has that impacted the value equation for people? Um and it is not, it was eighty-seven percent, it's a very high eighty-five percent in twenty twenty-four. So and keep in mind that we have forty-three percent say their taxes are high. You only have eleven percent rating value only fair, so even if they do have the concerns. The value of the services being provided lifts people into a positive assessment. On the services being provided by the city. The next three charts are very busy, so we'll just kinda take them at a. Macro level. First off, how do they rate current city services? Do we have a sea of blue positivity or a red rip tide? It's a sea of blue across the board. Uh from ninety-three percent on police and fire. Um in the eighties, when we look at EMS, the parks, the trails, the community center. Um a couple items I will point to. Um the quality of drinking water. The unfavorable did go up from twenty eighteen about fifteen points.
Yeah.
So it's something to flag. Uh for you, one data point, a trend does not make, you need a third data point in order to see. Um if there's us, you know, system. Sustainable change. Uh on this one, I can't do a comparison because obviously it depends on what I. I mean, I go to one community and it's fifty-fifty, another's ninety-ten, your tolerance of taste, hardness, all those sorts of things. So it is something to flag. Um the other one I would uh flag, the highest uh level outside of the drinking water of uh unfavorable is the city street repair and maintenance. Seventy to twenty-eight, that is actually a very strong. The norm right now unfavorable on street repair maintenance across the metro area is forty percent favorable. Uh so while it is something to to look at, you always, you you're never gonna get to ninety percent. No community is ever gonna, ninety percent, even if they do a little overlay every year, uh people will still have issues. Uh but that twenty-eight percent is very strong. That's the rating of current services. We then asked folks to go through the list again. And tell us, do they view it as an absolutely essential service, very important, somewhat important, or not too important service? I've rated this because especially for the 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 top eighty percent of the chart. Uh there were very few people saying somewhat important or not too important, so I've just rated the essential and the very important. And you can see a clear te- some tiers of prioritization in people's minds. Police and fire and EMS right at the top. It's essential, um very few people saying very important. Then we go down to the city drinking water, sanitary sewer, street repair maintenance, snowbowl, electric service. I create the second tier, the highest level, we still have fifty percent indicating that it. And uh that it's an absolutely essential service. And then we go down to more specific city services. From parks, trails, the pro recreation programs, the community centers, southwest transit, the curling and event center, and then golf. Uh the more narrow focus you become, obviously, the 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 narrower the field of people seeing that it's important, they're not going to use the service. Uh so this gives you a prioritization as you look towards a budget. Uh for folks as they consider across the board, city services. That's the prioritization. We went through the list one more time then and asked folks, would you increase funding, maintain funding? Or hospital eliminate the funding for the services? This is set up as a stoplight, green, more funding, red, less funding, yellow, it's above the right above.
Do you, really quick, do you ever clarify, like? I wouldn't expect the average person necessarily always know what like economic development is. Do you ever like clarify those things for them?
We did, if.
I think the statement, I think we just use economic development, yep, yep. If there's if there's confusion or something, sometimes we'll do such as or an example, but I need it to be consistent across, yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah. Um so I always tell clients with this chart, look at the green versus the red, and that'll show where folks want dollars put. So on police, uh much more green than red. Parks or a fire service, EMS, the quality of drinking water. Keeping in mind of people that increase on the on the drinking water unfavorable rating, it's something to look at. You actually have forty-seven percent indicating that they would like to see increased funding towards drinking water. Um street repair and maintenance, also very high. On the other side, then it becomes, you know, kind of the niche, especially the park and rec, where we look at golf. Um and the curling event center, those sorts of things, so this should help prioritization. You look at the values people have on these services and where they would like to see funding go. If it's maintaining, eliminating, or increasing funding. Electricity rates. Uh overall, uh thirty-eight percent now think they're high, forty five percent about average. Uh sixteen percent say they're low and three percent are unsure. And speaking with staff before, I think a lot of this really depends especially on new residents, what your experience was before you came to the city of Chaska. And if you think the rates are high or low, because it is strange to me as I look at this chart, that you do have a growth in those saying high. We also have a growth in those saying that they're low in comparison, it's almost like a bell shaped curve. Uh with both sides represented and the forty-five percent about average, right in the middle of the mountain top.
Also probably the timing you did this was probably one of their first higher bills for the summer with air conditioning, so.
Oh, fair point too, yeah, yep. Overall evaluation then, has the quality of city services been able to keep pace with growth? Absolutely. Uh eighty-five percent this time, uh twelve percent said no, three percent were unsure. So at the time of of the growth that's happened over all the years. You have been able to maintain services across the board in the eyes of residents. Let's turn to public safety. Do they think crime has increased, decreased, or remained about the same over the past two years? Tips a little bit more to increase versus decrease. This question varies, the closer you are to City Minneapolis and St. Paul, it's radically different in the first ring, second ring, the further you get out. So you actually have nine percent more saying they've increased. Do people feel safe in Chaska? Absolutely, unchanged from twenty eighteen. Have they been a victim of a crime in the past year? Eleven percent, that's actually down a a few percentage points from where you were in twenty eighteen. Lot of things I didn't think I'd ever ask in surveys when I started thirty years ago. This topic along with garbage, organized garbage collection, chickens, the list.
Yeah, they're my top three right there.
Yeah, there you go. I'm retired.
Yes, I am.
Congratulations. Um we told folks an intro on what the state did last year, or what the state, what they're thinking of doing. Um and we asked folks, do you support or oppose restricting the number of licenses allowed to be sold in the city of Chaska to the state minimum three? Yes, sixty-two percent support and thirty-four percent opposed. Do the next question, do you support or oppose the city of Chaska making the smoking of marijuana products within city parks and misdemeanor events? Fifty-nine, thirty-three percent support. The issue that divides the community is edibles. The use of edibles, um. The misdemeanor events in city parks or facilities, forty-eight percent support, forty-one percent opposed, and eleven percent you're unsure. So on this one, the city, the residents are comfortable restricting licenses. They're very comfortable restricting the use of marijuana in parks. But on edibles, it really doesn't buy, it tips to a morality support, uh but it is narrow for eighty, forty-one. The next slide, this is also a pandemic effect slide. Uh this question is, if you wanted to, you feel you have a say about the way uh the city runs things. Uh it was uh seventy-one percent, it's fifty-eight percent now. So I mean, a number of people say no increase, so actually that one. The shift went over to unsure. For basically twelve to eighteen months, it was virtual, it was soup, all sorts of. The those sorts of non-traditional ways of interacting with the city. And what happened for a lot, especially older residents, is they have not re-engaged. Uh on this, um the re-engage of an issue comes out, but if it's really quiet. They're not paying attention like they used to, they're much more focused on national state issues. Um and so this this applies to cities and school districts, this engagement piece. Um so it's not any concern about not having to say. It's just really, they're not paying attention right now as much as they used to. Overall evaluation of the mayor and city council. Uh this time, seventy-seven percent favorable, twenty-one percent only fair, nobody said four this time. Uh the norm on this is sixty-five to thirty. Uh so very strong uh endorsement of the job of the mayor and city council. What about changing the mayor's terms to four years? Um this one, it was fifty-four percent, it's now up to sixty percent. Uh endorsing that, there's very little intensity. If we look at strong support versus strong opposition, it's seven percent to three percent. It's a soft support, but the issue now is beyond us in a margin of error, fifty-fifty proposition. It's actually at sixty percent support. What's not, what's kind of gone the other way? Is changing to an at-large system. In twenty eighteen was the first time we asked a question, thirty-four percent supported it then. Now we're down to twenty-six percent supporting it. Uh the opposition moved from thirty-two to forty-two, but you can still see that it is a nebulous coalition. Because a third of the people are unsure on the policy change.
Do you just find what at-large means in that question?
Yeah, being spoken about.
Curious.
The city is currently divided into four ward, where it's a council members elected from each ward. Some of their cities have an at-large system where like the mayor, the entire city votes for all council members. Yeah, and we did follow up and we asked them if why they supported or opposed. Um the reason for opposition, they like the current system, it's fine as is. Every area is equally represented, uh were the key reasons. Um then you have the reasons for support. Um every, the the council will be a voice for the entire city, not just the board. And then you just have those change agents saying changes good regardless, those are the top two reasons on both sides. Switching over to city staff now. Uh first off, forty-eight percent indicate that they've had quite a lot or some contact with city staff. Uh that's really high, the norm on this is about thirty-five percent. Uh so the administration, like the first presentation, community likes to engage with the administration. Uh at a very high level, so is that level of engagement uh can create uh favorability? Absolutely. Uh eighty-six percent favorable, twelve percent. On this one, it's a better than seven to one ratio, positive to negative, the norm ratio right now is forty-one. Uh so a lot more contact, a lot more interaction, you know, a lot more favorability in the minds of the community when they think of city staff. Overall endorsement, development across the city? Very, very high. Uh when we look at this. Um at the high over nineteen years, now eighty-one percent say the development seems well planned. What about the pace of development? Sixty-nine percent. We're at the high saying about right. Um and you have seventeen percent saying too rapid. And ten percent saying not rapid enough. Um so with a margin of error, you've almost created the bell shaped curve here, you have equal amounts on. Too fast, not fast enough, with seventy percent saying above right, you kind of reached the perfect balance. Uh when it comes to development, which would explain the previous response, it doesn't seem well planned, thought out.
What was happening in two thousand and five?
Recession?
It's right before the recession.
Okay. And that number just jumps out.
We were a high peak, it was a high peak of.
Yeah, cause like Target had just came in.
The forty-four on the two rapid in two thousand and five.
All of Chaska Commons up there was developing at that point, it was going from foreign fields to what it is now.
The other thing would be interesting is like, you'll be to slice it so that you could also see the percentage of population who had moved to Chaska. There were n- new residents in Chaska within the past like five to ten years, cause I bet that if you went back to the tw- two thousand and five study. It'd be a very small number who are new residents, but you get down to like, you know, twenty twenty-four, within the past five to ten years, there's a lot of people. Came in or knew, so that grew through, they perceive growth differently.
Yeah, oh absolutely, I think communities got, we caught there's phases of growth. In two thousand and five, you were in the. Way too much hell no more growth, then you kind of evolved coming out of that recession, you had the recession paired into that. Uh where there's job issues, business issues, those sorts of things. Because typically, once you get past growth is too fast, like you had in two thousand and five, then you say, okay, I accept it. Now I'm gonna try to find to what type of growth we're looking for. Uh but you kind of had that. Uh hitched on to the recession and coming out of that at the same time. Um do folks feel informed about development plans in the community, and do they know where to find information? If we look at the yes first, seven, sixty-two percent say. If we look at the yes first, seven, sixty two percent say yes, they do feel informed. Uh, thirty eight percent say no. Um, now do they know where to find the information? Uh, if they wanted to, forty five percent say they feel informed and they know where to find it. Interestingly, twenty two percent said, no, I don't feel informed. I know where to find it. That kind of goes into the detached. It's almost a one for one of those saying unsure. And that says only sixteen percent indicate that they don't feel informed. And they don't know where to find information about development across the community.
So was there a follow-up question at all of like, if you knew where to find information, where would you find it?
No, we did not. We, we, uh, we did ask, do you have any suggestions to improve communication about proposed developments? Uh, and we had eighty one percents that said no, uh, five percent said mailings, three percent newsletter. Uh, meetings, local newspaper. So only ten, twelve percent offered examples that help you.
The thing that we took out of it when we were looking at some of the detailed stuff, and it sort of surprised me a little bit. Is that the preferred method that people had was mailings, like our postcards that we do. Those seem to hit people the best. Now, it wasn't like perfect. Um, I would have thought it would have been more of a social media type of push. Uh, but it really was those postcard type things that we're sending in the mail.
Attentive to those. There's a lot of noise everywhere else.
Well, talk about, yeah, we'll get into communications at the end. Uh, community characteristics, but once again, this is set up like a stoplight. Green, bring more in, red. Uh, two few, or actually, no. Two, I, I reversed this unfortunately, I just noticed it's mislabeled. Okay. The green is actually too much. The red is actually too little. Uh, the yellow is about the right amount. So you want to look at the red for the purpose of this chart. Where do people see deficiencies? Where would they like, what type of development would they like to see more of? You can see a clear theme, uh, come through here. First off, affordable starter rooms. Then we go down to assisted living and one level senior housing. You're at the point now, when communities get to the, where you're at, people really like living here. It's highly rated. They now turn their concerns, is there a place for my child to start their family? In the community, and then is there a place for me, uh, other end when I downsize and the senior side? The lifecycle housing concern now that has come and, you know, it's a good place for a community to be. Cause people want to stay in the community and they want their kids to come back to the community. On the, on the, uh, business and establishment side, uh, entertainment establishments. Uh, then service and retail, light manufacturing and restaurants would be highly deserved. Uh, is there anything they think the community has too much of? Um, interestingly, executive high-end housing, move-up housing. But then the parks, open spaces, trails and bikeways, they actually net out with more people saying too much than not enough. Um, and so when you think about it, it is kind of color intuitive to what we see across the metro area. Uh, it's still, you know, the majority of people say about the right amount. But if it tips one way, if we look at parks and recreation amenities, um, and trails and bikeways, it tips a little bit to say too much. Switching over to retail. Uh, once again, we asked them what the principal retail, um, they'll tell us the store, we tried to collapse these down into areas. Uh, but Chaska Commons at forty percent, followed by Chaska Plaza. Ten percent refuse to be tied down to a specific retail location. And then a series of, uh, things in single digits. If we look at the next chart, the local retail shopping dollars. First off, we have three percent of people saying they don't spend any dollars, uh, in the community. Twenty six percent between one and twenty five, uh, one percent, twenty five percent. Forty two percent between twenty six and fifty, and then we have twenty eight percent at fifty one or higher. Uh, the typical resident spending above forty percent of their retail dollar in the community. What about the frequency of local purchases for retail? The daily has dropped. Um, it's dropped from twenty two to nine, and the ship, it just kind of went from weekly. Uh, the weekly category from the two to three times a month and the monthly, so less frequent. But it still has the same amount of people saying they're purchasing in the city of Chaska.
What are you seeing in other communities for this? Well, like, people feel inflation. Is that impacting this across all communities where you're seeing a shift like this? And from the daily to like the weekly?
Yes, it gets, gets impacted, but then also what comes into play is the, um. Uh, growth of online.
Oh, sure.
Shopping coming into play, maybe, but retail behavior has changed greatly. So not only has inflation, the cost of goods limited, so people might go out less. Uh, but it's also they can order and have it delivered to them.
Okay.
It's, it would be interesting in the future survey to kind of figure out that percentage of online versus local, because I think that. That served for the competition, right? When we talk about like, like for experience shopping, right? Someone goes to like a bookstore because they want to experience books, not if they want to just get the book, they'll just go to Amazon, right? Or something, right? So I think that that sort of influences the, you know, for our business development, kind of like what we look at attracting.
We go to the next slide, the amount of purchases in Chaska compared to three years ago. Um, what's gone up is the number of people saying about the same. Um, you have twenty five percent saying it's increased. Interestingly, to your, to your question on the decrease side, you don't see people decreasing like we see in other communities. With that retail, uh, online portion impact. Uh, so two thirds are indicating that their retail behavior is in shape for the past few years. What about eating out? Uh, the percentage of meals being eaten out comes in about one in five. Of twenty percent of meals are eaten out by residents in Chaska. You do have twelve percent indicate that they do not eat out at all, um, and you do have ten percent that are eating out, fifty percent in one. Uh, but the typical resident eats out about once every five days. What about spending on restaurants in Chaska? The nothing has dropped down to fourteen percent. Um, the one in twenty five percent is up to fifty six. Um, and so the typical resident, if we look at this one, and restaurant shopping. It tips up with, you have a five percent of over seventy five and the ten percent. It's at about twenty three, twenty four percent pull up of their retail, their restaurant dollars. Being spent in Chaska, so a little bit more than retail. Would more options increase their dining in Chaska? Uh, interestingly, there's a change on this one, um, from twenty eighteen. In twenty eighteen, it kind of split this one. Now we have more people saying no, it would not impact. Um, and I think part of that has to do with cost. Uh, and the impact from the dollars, it goes far, they're kind of, they're gonna eat out one, one out of five nights. Um, they're probably not gonna go, go off in a second, uh, in a five day period. Switching over to downtown. Has downtown, uh, the quality of development been improving or declining downtown, or has it been made about the same? Um, improving, did drop seven points, declining, dropped by fifty percent. And about the same, seven, that's up seven points. That's up very positively then. Uh, with people seeing stability and the changes that have been made in downtown over the past few years. Um, but then also you almost have half the population still say that it has been improving. What about the importance of revitalizing downtown? Um, it's still important, just not as intensely so. Uh, last night we had eighty three percent saying, uh, that it's either very or somewhat important. Uh, this time it's still a very high seventy two percent. But it is a softer, it's gone from very to somewhat important. Uh, the not too, not at all, uh, went from seventeen to twenty three. So it's still absolutely a prioritization. We have three quarters of the community. Saying that it remains at least as somewhat important, even not very important, uh, thing for the city to do.
Would that have be affected by the fact that? When the survey was done, a good portion of this was already been com- in a completed process?
That absolutely could be part of it into the mix. What else is, yeah. What more is there to do or is it second done? Yeah.
You know, because in eighteen, we were always talking about rebuilding forty one and a, a lot of the amenities. And in twenty four, half of it was done, three quarters of it probably was done when they did the survey. All it is now, the finishing touches, the. You know, the fancy stuff now.
Maybe, beautification, yeah.
Play finding.
Absolutely could come in, because the revitalizing, if it's been revitalized. You know, that type of shift, but people still do it as a part of you.
So can you read just a little bit more about the text of what the question was that was asked? Because, because when you say revitalization, I mean, it's not just like us, you know, redoing the streets and sidewalks and cityscapes. But I think for a lot of people, the revitalization is about, you know, getting the stores and shops they want, the restaurants, the businesses, you know, that sort of thing. So it's that those other amenities that, you know, fill in those, you know, fill in the buildings.
Right, we, 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 uh, the city of Chaska implemented a downtown master plan in two thousand twelve. To identify the key priorities for the city to invest time and money to improve the downtown commercial investment district. This is like a project such as redevelopment, Fire and Spire, the curling and defense center. Other commercial development, for example, where downtown residences located, rebuilding streets and utilities and the addition of special streets.
Okay.
And then ask about, then how important is it for the city to revitalize downtown?
So in this case, it's very much focused on the projects and the like, a lot of the work that we're doing in that case. Yeah, okay, so it's not looking at like the end result of, you know, the, the further end result, which is really the population of the businesses that consumers are looking for. Okay, right, very, okay, good, okay.
How often are folks visiting downtown Chaska? Um, on this one, we have five percent saying daily, this is kind of in a shift over. And we did see a doubling in those saying never. Um, to twenty two percent, and I think it's shocking with city staff, a lot of that had to do with times where it was torn up, it was difficult. Uh, and you also do have a lot of, on the other side of forty one. Uh, where a lot of those folks went north and east as opposed to south. Um, so you do have that increase. Uh, it comes though, if we just average it across the board. They're coming down about every two to three weeks, the typical resident.
It'll be really interesting to see one southwest Chaska develops more.
Yeah.
And all that residential goes in, how that shifts, because to your point, there's a lot in the northeast. That's been developed and our southwest has been a little bit lagging. And so as that changes, what this will look like next time would be interesting.
Well, we talked about also development, you know, like one of the, one of the things we were talking about, you know. At some point was that with Cooper's not being there, right? It was, it was some place that people went to who were local in downtown Chaska. But if there was like some destination, you know, like in that location, that people said, wow, there's like a great grocery store, or some other amenity there that drew people. This suddenly shifts because now you have people who are coming from all around Chaska who are going to, you know, potentially other destinations.
Yeah, I look at that, just think people. Said I'm gonna mess with construction and it wasn't, I mean, and they haven't got back yet, right? I think the timing of that project, I mean, it was mostly open by then, I get that, right? But, um, I just think that never, I suspect is a blip for this year, it's my side, like, because of. The journey that, that. Even though it's open, people feel very strongly about that.
I also think inflation, sorry, inflation plays into it too. People are spending less generally because things cost more. A lot of downtown Chaska is restaurants and retail shops that aren't necessities always. So you're not gonna go to those places. I mean, even I personally go to less of those little shops. And things to shop, not necessarily in Chaska, but like other places. Because I'm a lot more mindful now how I spend my dollar, just because of the general, how far a dollar goes. So I also wonder about that and playing into things.
I think to your point though, a lot of, uh, a lot of the businesses are like, businesses you go to because you need to, not because you're. You're casually browsing, right? You know, like two veterinary clinics, a travel agency, you know, things like that, you know, those are, you know, shops who, you know, you're not. Casually saying, I'm gonna go browse these shops. So I think that that sort of changes the demographic, or not the demographic, it changes the intent for consumers or residents.
I don't think that's changed that much though.
No, not, not at all.
Perception that it's shifted, but when I'm, I mean, growing up literally thirty years in downtown. It's even from the early days of downtown, the amount of retail versus office versus whatever the other category is, is about the same.
Well, I mean, nor that it hasn't shifted, it's like, I think of, you know, we kind of look at what we're trying to achieve, we're trying to like, push it to a little bit more, um. More like retail amenities that, you know, that people would be for like, wanna go to downtown and browse, you know, like the. Occasional wine shops or the cheese shops or whatever, or like restaurants and things like that. I don't know why everything I'm talking about is food related, but. Me, I'm hungry, but you know, but things like that, but.
But don't you think technology is at play here as well? You have your DoorDash's.
Oh, absolutely.
All of that sort of amenities that, you know, a lot of people work from home now post-COVID. And so you have folks that, you know, are used to being at home and used to getting those services brought to them rather than going to them.
So back, that would be interesting background contextual information for when we look at demographics of like, of these, I don't know if we capture that of like, what percentage of these people. You know, what percentage of residents like work from home and, you know, do the majority of their purchases online, things like that. Because I think that kind of helps to also formulate like what our market looks like too, right?
Yeah, that's actually an interesting point, because I even thought about, let's just say the most, I live downtown, so how often do I go up north? Today I got lunch from Saki sushi, but it was delivered to my door, so I didn't go up there.
Yeah.
I got an order from Target yesterday, but it was delivered to my door. So it's like that shift, I think that's a good point.
Yeah. Something we want to know in the future, honestly, yeah.
We asked folks, uh, for a, we asked if they thought it was a major concern in downtown Chaska, minor concern or not a concern at all. Uh, what led the list was rising rents. Uh, thirty seven percent said a major concern, combined seventy percent. Uh, but lack of parking, if we add the major and minor together, uh, comes in at eighty four percent. Then not enough shopping options, and then pedestrian and bicycle safety. Uh, at seventy percent, but you can see the intensity, you go from thirty seven to thirty six, twenty six.
When you say rising rents, you're talking about, I'm assuming residential, you're talking about.
Rising rents for store.
Storefronts, okay.
Yeah.
I.
So when you're surveying, I mean, are you, I mean, these are just residents in Chaska, but did you also survey the businesses owners of Chaska? I mean, how are you?
This is just residents. So this is for each of the following, please tell me if you think it is a major concern in downtown Chaska, minor concern or not a concern at all.
Okay.
I see your question. Me personally, I would not know what it costs to rent the store.
Right.
But you would not know what?
Cause what it actually is versus the perception of something matters.
So could you read the, the, like, finish reading the question of like, what they term rising rents, is just asking the statement, rising rents?
Rising rent for storefronts.
Okay.
Yeah, and the lack of available parking, not enough retail shopping options and pedestrian and bicycle safety.
So the, the, at its crux, this is a perception question, right? It's, you know, hundred percent, this is what they're perceiving as the problem, right? You know, the residents have in their minds some idea like, oh, I think this must be the problem, right?
Yes, yeah.
My store that I want downtown is not coming, or it's because.
There's more parking, but the perception is there's a lot of parking. Thankfully, I think we're answering that with some wayfinding, so I think that's the. For the perception of things in the fourth.
Right, yeah.
And it's available parking in downtown.
Okay.
When do they come down?
True.
So.
So that question was available parking?
Yeah, a lack of available.
Lack of available parking.
So it's not available, but they need it.
Yeah, well, anyway, I think that this is interesting, because there may be some other studies that we could do like later, which is to look at parking. Does he do, are people able to find the parking? Do they see the sign? I mean, there's a whole different thing around that perception issue, right?
Remember, lack of parking is a good thing. That means people are using it. I mean, really, it depends on how you look at it, sometimes.
But to your point, if a person was going down and their trip downtown was limited to fire and ice. And, you know, they're gonna say, there's not enough parking.
Yeah.
If they came out.
Downtown trips are always to burn and spark.
Yeah, so, it's, it's, it's interesting, I, but yeah, I think that's a.
But then if they're going to like, you know, some other shops and like, you know, the other part of downtown, and they're saying, well, I can't find parking. Cause they're expecting to park only on the street and not realizing there's other parking, then there's an issue, there's something we need to. Not realizing there's other parking, then there's an issue, there's something we need to address, right? Yeah. That's, I think that's would be nice to dig into for, for that problem solving piece of it, right?
Uh, do they support financial incentives for downtown Chaska development? Uh, yes, absolutely, eighty two percent support, seven percent opposed. Uh, eleven percent for unsure, depends on how it develops, they'll say, uh, those sorts of things. There's not a lot of intensity, uh, it's only ten percent feels strongly, weighs out nine to one in favor of strong support. Um, this question is, you know, back in the nineties, the first part of the century. People opposed financial incentives. What changed on this was the recession and the competition for businesses. Uh, we're now, I mean, this is very high at eighty two percent, but typically across the metro area, it's about seventy percent. Uh, for development incentives and billions. Switching over to parks and rec. Overall evaluation of playground facilities, athletic facilities and trails, uh, overwhelmingly positive. Uh, ninety percent favorable on playground facilities, ninety. Ninety six, or eighty six percent of athletic facilities and trails at ninety percent. So extraordinarily high ratings on part of recreation. What about, uh, city park and recreation programming? Forty percent indicate that they are in their household and use programming in the past couple of years. Uh, you're not gonna do much better on satisfaction, ninety nine point. Um, don't stand any course in. Does the recreation program and the amenities meet the needs of their household? Yes. Ninety percent on program, eighty eight percent on recreation amenities. How often are folks walking or biking in Chaska? Uh, we have eight percent that say daily, we have twelve percent that said, that say never. The typical resident is walking, um, a couple times, two to three times a month, is where that's at, across the community. Do they agree or disagree with the statement that Chaska is a walkable or bikeable community? Absolutely. Eighty percent agree with that, only fourteen percent disagree with that statement. We talked with them and read them, um.
A paragraph on the community center. And we asked folks, first off, were they aware of the community center master plan? Just like your facilities improvement plan, thirty six percent were aware of the community center plan. Um, how important is it to complete the work in the master plan? Uh, eighty three, sorry, ninety three percent say at least somewhat important, with thirty eight percent saying very important.
I should, so one of the things that's changed over the past few years is that, is that the Chaska Herald's like, you know, hasn't, didn't do as much like local coverage. And eventually, you know, fold, folded up like pretty recently, so. Would like, if we go back to like, you know, the previous surveys of like, you know, twenty sixteen, two thousand and five, for comparable type projects, what was? This awareness, what did it look like then when Chaska Herald was much stronger and, you know, out there more?
I'd have.
Yeah, I, I can go back and look in the data.
I'm just kinda curious.
But.
It's a good question, Mike.
Yeah, I, I'd have to go back and look in the data, but the, I do remember that. There was actually specific questions we asked about the Herald, and. If I remember right, there wasn't a, if, there was not an extremely high readership of the Chaska Herald. And so I don't, I don't know that the readership of the Herald actually exceeded the thirty six percent. But I can check that out, because we have the, we have the surveys going back.
I do have, I have the twenty eighteen survey here. Here, let, let me get to the, we're almost at the information sources, so then I do have, I think you talk about the Chaska Herald.
So that's probably the best comparison, because there were specific questions on that.
Yeah. Um, is the community center an important asset? Absolutely, ninety percent say yes. Uh, only four percent say no. Turning to getting around Chaska, uh, ninety percent rated favorably, it's a soft favorable, uh, most of them saying good. Uh, ten percent said only fair, nobody said more. What about their commute? Uh, sixty seven percent indicate that they leave Chaska on a regular basis. Uh, how do they rate their commute? Uh, eighty three percent rated positively. It's a soft positive, it's good, seventeen percent only fair. And in the upper right, you can see we asked them how they get to their job site or wherever they're going, eighty five percent indicate that they're driving alone. Public transportation, thirty seven percent indicate they are a member of their household and use public transportation in the past two years. How do they rate that experience? Uh, ninety two percent rated favorably, while eighty percent say only fair, nobody rated it poorly. Uh, Southwest Transit, fifty seven percent indicated that they were aware of the service. Um, if they were aware, if this wasn't if they used, if they were aware. Uh, from what they've heard or seen or experienced, how do they rate? So the staff's not known things of their experience from what they hear. People say about the service, um, it's perceived positively, eighty four percent rated favorably. Uh, fifteen percent said only fair.
How does it feel weirdness in this survey compared to the one that's on West Transit just did? Did you learn about it all? When we just said it for Southwest Transit? Cause I remember this question, like, do you remember?
It was like, it was much higher, actually, but of course it was, this was for awareness, but. But it was, but the interesting thing was, it was like, it was a ridership poll.
Yeah, right, right.
So, so we're polling riders who ride Southwest Transit, so the, but the, so the rating. Um, but it's, but the rate, the ratings were, the ratings were, was actually quite a bit different in like the rating of service. Because the, the ratings were something closer, like a ninety percent on the, on, but I think like, good was some like, was like some like sixty percent. Then excellent was like, you know, and totaling up, it, it was ending up, you know, closer to like ninety two percent or something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it was really, this is interesting, again, it's a different data point, yeah.
Yeah, I'd have to take it like indeed, but we have the different communities people represented, so yeah.
Yeah, right, Chaska.
Yeah, exactly. So it could be like, it could be, this is, so this is an interesting drill down on Chaska's view, right, because the others look at. Chan and the itinerary, so it could be that there's different, different things that people are seeing.
I would venture to say a community like Eden Prairie would rate. They're receiving different types of services.
Absolutely, yep.
Absolutely, and that will. All right, communication. Overall evaluation of communications from the city, uh, it was eighty one percent, it's seventy eight percent statistically insignificant. Uh, the norm favorable evaluation right now is sixty five percent. So very strong of the rating, so once again, the favorable, sometimes I wondered. Less information might equal better ratings, or does more information equal worse ratings? Actually, high levels of information equal higher ratings in the city of Chaska.
It's amazing there, sorry, amazing there that, uh, poor and unsure are zero. That's interesting.
That's interesting.
Where are folks getting their information? And this, we have, this, this is the big change to your question with Chaska Herald. Not Chaska, Chaska Herald, Chaska Herald. Um, thirty five percent in the survey say the newsletter, followed by the website, social media, email, word of mouth. Uh, a couple of things we'll say in this, we'll talk about comparisons, social media is extraordinarily happening. Uh, as the primary source of information, most people do not want to admit that social media is their primary source of information on anything. Uh, the norm is about five percent. So yours is very high. What is low right now is the word of the month. Because what we've seen, and, and over Chaska Herald, the shutdown is very recent, so it's not necessarily. The behavior, and how it's gonna change people's behavior, but what we've seen is newspapers have disappeared. Or they don't cover cities like they used to, what explodes is the grapevine. Uh, because who relied on the newspaper was basically over fifty five years. They're not going to go on social media, they're not interested, uh, the website is. I used to have, it's not an information source, so they have gone to the grapevine. Many communities, many school districts have their number one source of information right now, the grapevine. Where small town Minnesota has come into the metro area, you don't have that yet, but like I said, Chaska Herald's closure is very. How it is all over the next few years, it'll be very interesting to see.
Can I just quick ask a question? Was this, was this a question where they got to? They got to answer on their own, or was this a predetermined list?
Okay, what's our city newsletter?
Yeah, what would be considered as the newsletter?
People making that up, thirty five percent of people are like, yeah, that newsletter.
For us too, because we're like, what do they exactly mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, which sort of gets you. It gets to your point about, is this open ended question? It is, and so then you're just like, what do they think our city newsletter is?
I think it's a Chaska Herald, because it's Chaska Herald.
Okay.
That would be my guess.
The brand of it, well, and last time, uh, the Chaska Herald was called out by thirty seven percent.
So they specifically said in.
They said that.
Versus this time, thirty five percent are saying city newsletter.
That's a.
That still could be the Herald on their new girl.
Mailer out quarterly, so that might be.
It's like the Chaska today or something like that, or, yeah.
I just, I guess I didn't think of it as a newsletter.
Okay.
If, if they receive it in the mail.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Uh, but you can see the impact of the Herald was by over a third.
Yeah.
Uh, in twenty eighteen, where do those people go? How does it play out?
It's huge.
What's the best way to receive information? If we look at this one, you know, mailings, do they wanna hold something in their hands? Uh, thirty five percent say mailings, do they wanna push a button? Um, we do have sixty percent saying website, social media or email. Um, in that category, and then the other three options, very few people. Had the, you know, meetings, coffee with a cop, it's only so personally, I'm actually much less interested in the.
Yeah. Better bump up your coffee with a cop.
Maybe it should be steak with a cop, yeah.
So the interesting thing is, I mean, just like I'm looking at it, like, how many of these are push versus pull, right? So if you look at it as like, a, a, a push is something, a, a push is something where we push it out to them versus they're passive, right? Mailings are active push, city website's a pull, social media is a pull, right, I mean.
But I wonder how many people think city website, city Facebook, has the same thing, to be honest?
Yeah, maybe, yeah, that's, that's very possible, yeah.
Enough.
Yeah.
Uh, generational difference to think that I could, I could see people quite enough for the same thing. And social media being more like TikTok, Instagram.
For sure.
Things like that.
I, I think it's really good to suss out that a little bit in terms of our social.
I think that really just shows that, you know, you need to have multiple channels.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yep, absolutely.
I mean, to, to your point, the push versus pull, the active versus passive relationship with information. You do have a majority of people, you're one of few communities that say you have a majority of people preferring electronic. The passive, the problem with passive, and I've seen it happen with the communities, is you become a mile wide in the engine. With it, with the information, yes, it's all over. But if there's nothing going on, nothing of interest. You have people that are not getting any information, they don't need it. If you only go look at it and you're not pushing information, it does create a detachment. And then I've seen high levels of uncertainty, uh, do you rate the mayor and city council? I don't know, I haven't heard anything bad about them, don't have any problems, but I don't have enough information to rate them. Um, from, you know, the, all of those sorts of things, so it is a tension. Uh, the, when you get rid of mailings, uh, that sort of push information to people, it's just something to be cognizant of. Are people watching city council meetings? Um, sorry to say, maybe spouses aren't watching. Family friends, uh, what I will say with this one. To me, I go back, this was before my time, when my business partner, uh, was in the eighties. The highest level we ever had, not frequently and occasionally, was when Jesse Fisher was. That was like a match, plus TV. This actually, the, with this numbers like this, this is actually probably well functioning in the sense, it's available to people. But they're not here for the fireworks.
What, channel fifteen, that people still get that?
Yeah.
I wouldn't even know how to get a TV.
Well, I, I don't think it's live. You gotta go to YouTube TV for it live.
Well.
Channel fifteen.
But they actually call that YouTube, because channel fifteen, it's still broadcast on cable.
But it's not live.
Yeah, it's a recording of it, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm just saying, yeah, I'm saying it's recorded, it's not live.
I am not kidding when I say I could not get my TV to go to a channel if I tried.
Over there.
Yeah, so we.
I wouldn't know how.
I mean, this is, this is one of those great things that if we could, you know, for slicing it in the future, it'd be great to see like, you know, demographics of age and things like that. Cause I think it would be certain groups that would be like, here's your target.
We do have, that's part of the data we receive, we're, we're able to cross, cross reference based on demographics.
So I think that, you know, just a general statement is that for like, for like the. Uh, communication strategy moving forward, it'd be great to like, dig in to like, you know, really kind of build a communication strategy around like. Understanding of like, which groups tend to get information where, so we can more effectively hit the audiences.
Yeah, it would, especially like, being at the table that talked about communication strategy at the last retreat.
Yeah.
That information will be invaluable at the next retreat to say, how do, you know, when we. Dig into this, what does it look like? Are we spending our time in the right places or the wrong places?
Absolutely. Yep.
Subscribing to an online community newspaper, now that the Chaska Herald does exist. Um, we have twenty percent say very likely, thirty nine percent somewhat likely, and then thirty nine percent not too likely or not at all. On this one, as you, there's traditional marketing projections you can do on this. I tend to always do a conservative approach, because there's a difference between intention and behavior. The numbers are the details, how often, what's included, typically you take half of the very likely and a quarter of the some likely. Which means that about twenty percent of the community would be the target audience of this. To keep in mind for this sort of thing, the target market for this is gonna be different than what the target market of the Chaska Herald is going to be.
Yeah.
Um, in the sense, it's not gonna be a lot of over fifty five year olds going to subscribe to a newspaper.
Was it, was it posed whether or not you'd pay for that, or was it free?
Uh, I don't think you're at that point of giving them.
Cause that's become the thing now, they charge you for more and more things, are you paying for that online service?
We just, we said, as you may know, the Chaska Herald recently stopped publishing their weekly newspaper. If an online community newspaper must started to cover the communities of Chaska, Chaska, Victoria and Harbor, how likely it could be. Which goes to your, to the point of intention to behavior, that would absolutely.
Thank paywall.
Uh, two more, city website, ninety three percent indicate that they have internet access, seven percent do not have internet access. Have they accessed the city website? Seventy eight percent indicate that they had. Uh, and ninety five percent indicated that they were able to find.
Wow, that's good.
So. Those are both high numbers, aren't they?
Very, yeah.
Ninety five is without a doubt, I can't find any.
Could you read the text of?
Your face was priceless.
Could you read the text of the question for a sec? We really wanna, of this, for the city, of, of the city website question.
Yeah, you access the city website.
And that's just all.
Yeah.
Because this goes back to, um, Michaela's, uh, comment too about like, some people will say that, oh yeah, I access the city website thinking you're just doing Facebook. And that's the city website, I, and I wonder, there's like a disambiguation, I think that may be something that is. Help, would be helpful in understanding, because I think that if someone, because I know, you know, I would think about like my mom, and they said, oh, you know, have you looked at Facebook? And she's thinking, oh, I looked at the website, and that's the way she would answer, right? And that's, and not understanding that they're completely different things.
I think though, the fact that people are responding saying they found what they're looking for.
Yeah.
Implies that there's more interaction than just getting pushed information.
Yeah, yeah, with the, with the website, when we, when we, I, that hasn't come up as people being confused, because we pretest. Are people confused on the city website bringing up social media? I mean, as seen as the city. If we go to the next slide, we talk about social media.
Yeah.
Do you use social media for Chaska information? Uh, forty three percent say. Um, forty-three percent say no. Um, and then thirty-eight percent indicate Facebook, seven percent Twitter or X. Instagram, YouTube, um, scattered, and then six percent confused. Uh, so you actually do have a majority of people indicating kind of differentiating between website and social media. Uh, and very much so tipped towards Facebook.
They're refused as like, absolutely, I will not access social media for Chaska.
Or just the one, just the one that told.
No way.
They're probably. Warrior in the background, they just want to move, right?
So I think we'll call a couple of brief statements, um, that. The changes that we've seen, like we've talked about, um, there's been some change in intensity. But there's been no change in fondness and favorability, uh, across the board. And to me, the summary slide is now at the highest number in eighteen years that consider. Chaska a small town as opposed to a suburb, which is really important and it leads to those high ratings. Since we started up with what they liked most about the community, it was the small town attributes. Uh, and values, uh, in the city and that aligns with where they can happen. So I think I could answer any of the questions.
Pretty nice when that's your mission statement.
Yeah.
Why not a lot of organizations could actually achieve that?
This is a quality small town.
Yeah, this is really interesting. I was like praising myself since we just did the Southwest Transit one. And we saw this, a similar thing in that going from excellent to good or, you know, that are somewhat good. Um, so I was praising myself for what ours could, for the Chaska one could look like, knowing how the transit one came out, which was still good. I mean, it wasn't like.
Yeah.
Bad, we'll just strengthen it, but we definitely saw that shift for Southwest Transit too. And so I was kind of praising myself for this and I think it came out, you know, better than I expected, but, um, definitely saw that same. To your point, that's what you're seeing across the board.
It's just, it's a lack and I keep wondering, are we going to go back? And I, 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 I don't know if we will ever go back to where we were. And I mean, I think we really are starting, it's been pretty stable.
Generationally, probably.
Yeah, probably.
We're gonna have to be a generation.
It's gonna have to be a generation. I think we've established the new norm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, on this public opinion, um, on a, a, a lot of issues, um, and the. Yeah, generationally or macro level things.
Yeah, we just had to look at that at my, I work for like a giant company and we had to look at that for our survey scores. On our metrics for our people because trying to get a perfect score on a survey these days is next to impossible. So it was hurting people because people just don't want to rate anyone excellent anymore. They're a lot more articulate. And it's very, very hard to get an excellent on anything. So we actually had to relook at all of our surveys, N P S transactional. To say how we, we don't want to just bring it down for the sake of bringing it down, but how we like actually look at this to say it's. Flickable and we're doing a good job knowing that less, it's harder to get that excellent rating. So even on a business level, we kind of look at our surveys that way and it was very interesting to do.
Which is always interesting because you get surveys everywhere, but there's always the ones like, just so you know. Anything less than excellent is not considered good. Like, have you ever got? And then when I hear them, like, that's dumb, I'm not gonna give you, you know, like you get some of that reaction, like, like, how are you telling me the excellence?
But the way things like N P S score and stuff, anything less than.
Yeah.
Excellent is gonna be extremely.
Because they're all calibrated on that. Like if, unless it's an excellent, you're not going to refer me to some, you know, for someone that I can, yeah.
Just changing gears, I just had a quick question because I, we went through a lot. I know we talked about the community center. One of the things I was curious, was it asked in regards to sales staffs?
No, we did not ask. We specifically didn't because, um. We, well, we talked about it at the beginning and we specifically didn't because it's sort of like. Uh, it's sort of like a school district asking questions on a referendum, uh, that if you're. You need to have something real enough out there to be able to, you, you know, for, for people to be able to see. Um, you know. You know, if we do this, you can, you know, we'll be able.
I just was curious because I just.
So I think, I, I think, uh, wh- when we. At whatever point we get to when we do something with a community center, we're gonna have to do that. It's just hard to do it as sort of a, a general survey. There's a lot of questions we ask.
No, I, I just, I remember us talking about it, but I didn't see it in there, so I just wanted to make sure. Okay.
Yeah, I just want to thank Peter because he's, I, I, I've known Peter for twenty-five years and he, I mean. He's, uh, does these surveys all across the, the metro area. Each year, our metro area managers association, uh, they. Do sort of a legislative update where they will do a survey of people across the metro area and sort of, sort of, sort of see where people are at on general issues. And they just do a fantastic job of really getting to the heart of where people are, are feeling and stuff. Uh, in the perception that's out there. So I, I really appreciate, uh, working with, uh, uh. Uh, with Peter and, and your partner, Bill. Uh, I haven't seen Bill in a long time, but, uh. All right, but, uh, um, and what I really appreciated about tonight is how, you probably didn't hear it. But when he slipped it in where he said that you guys score higher than Edina, that I, you know, that's that. Nobody else heard that?
I didn't hear the Edina part. I heard, I thought of one.
On which one, what was it?
Yeah, someone like Kenoka, unfavorable taxation environment.
I, I know, however, years ago, um. David Charles, city manager of Benetaka, he wanted us to do a comparative slide. And no way the mistake of labeling the cities had. And, oh my goodness gracious, so we don't label anything, we just talk about what's right now.
I remember years ago, we actually had that slide, but, um. By that time he had taken the names off of the cities and he put like city A, city B. Oh man, everybody's trying to guess what city it was.
Yeah, it was like the state, yeah, it was great, great. I appreciate that, thank you.
I was just gonna comment that, um. Again, great work and just listening to you speak, you can just sense the knowledge of the process, which is awesome, right? Um, you know, I think for me, intros, looking inwards of kind of what I hear and what I see. You know, it's, it is good to see some empirical data. That supports what we heard, particular with our last two years of taxes. Um, I'm just saying it, right? Because we, we did events and, and I had a lot of positive feedback. Of course, what we remember is some of the negative feedback, right? And that's what sticks, right? Because it's, those were hard decisions. That's still a hard decision and we just went through the budget this year and that's coming up again. But you look at the information and have that empirical evidence to say. These things matter to people, right? Fire and police as an example, right? Invest in this community, we're high, right? This is what I want to invest, right? Well, look what we're doing, right? Um, so I, like I said, I, again, those are lots of people and there's lots of people, reasons why people choose to live here. Um, but it is kind of, it is that hard because it's, it's easy to listen to loud voices. Because sometimes the people who are happy and satisfied aren't coming here. Um, so I, I, again, I just want to acknowledge that because I think it's very clear in that data that. Um, you know, people value those types of things. And truthfully, as the data shows, value using the tax dollars to reinvest and maintain those services.
I, I made the joke and I wouldn't be tired ten years ago. I had a nickel from every council member who said. This survey does not represent what I hear. Uh, because to your point, you hear from the ten percent who are actually unhappy. You might hear from the ten percent boosters. But most people, eighty percent are just marginalized and not understand the niche base seemed where they're at, so most people. Uh, because it does, didn't hear absolutely right. You know, I think battery starters were going through the survey and it's like, any feedback yet? And I'm like, I learned a long ago, if I started coding this survey, I remember the negative. And I'm thinking, oh my goodness, this is not going to be a positive survey. And then you look and it's ninety percent positive and you remembered the ten percent. So I just, until I have all the results, I mean, it is. Um. It, it, it is a more gap a whole because a lot of people are just living their lives.
So how much?
I was just gonna say, when you pick your sample group. You're intentional about who you pick demographically to try to get the spread of ages, genders. Like economics, diversity, or is it just very random and it just?
It's, it's, it's random in a sense that I established, so I, I, I just pull a random sample. Of cell phone samples through my database, um. But I, I have audits as we're going through it, so I know who works.
Yeah, and that was the other question. I was like, wow, you had an even amount of the words pretty much, so.
And so then I key says this information. I'll know the percent of renters, keep in mind, since, since a margin of error, but. For that, I have an expectation, we should be around twenty-five percent, should be around forty percent households and children, um, those, those key. Um, and we're going through for monitoring. I'm not screening, I'm not trying to find out, but if you do the random sample properly. The random sample is simply telling the database, choose every tax number. And if you do that and do, it, it, it will fall into place. The only time probably one in twenty surveys will have to screen for renters.
Okay.
Uh, that they're hard, but the, the way we do it, so you don't have. Some of the bad holes you see nowadays, this, you saw the fieldwork, it's almost, I guess the fourth of July was in there. But half of these were completed by appointment.
Yeah.
It's not, I call you, you say, no, I can't take it, and then we're just out of the next person. I'm gonna bias the sample automatically. On that because it's probably able to get, it's gonna be a younger person, this winner reviews, they're busier, all of those sorts of things. So if they say, this doesn't work, win dust.
Okay.
We'll call you back and set it up. So very rarely, I will establish a bonus, but very rarely do we ever have to screen.
Do you find now with the amount of scam calls and A I and technology? Is it harder for you to get people to trust you enough to do a survey because there's just so much crap out there?
There, I mean, there, there are a couple of things that we go, so we, we don't robo-call. So we never come up with potential scam. My phone records much to their chagrin still push the numbers in. I don't even use a robo dial.
Yeah.
Uh, in order to overcome that, so it's not gonna come up private, it's not gonna come up black, it's not gonna come up spam, any of that. Um, and then working with the city communication, uh, talking about the survey being out there. Um, and at this point, I think probably a lot of people have seen or heard of the surveys. Uh, that cities, school districts are doing, um, you know, nobody answers the four percent of that call, even if they hold a verse.
That's true.
Uh, and so you call, you leave a message, you introduce yourself. I explained that you're part of the random sample, it's really important, people call you back, it doesn't hurt to set out a time. And so we still, that, you can keep that non-response rate, that's ten percent.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's, I really commend you because it's a hard environment right now, you know, you get a lot of calls that. They say they're one thing and it ends up being another, you know, and it's, it's, it's challenging, so that's gotta be extremely challenging.
Not selling, um, and like I just started this statewide today, uh, for, to share with school districts this fall. That my company sponsored, um, to get information. Of course, we're talking presidential and national issues, that will be harder to get people to talk about. But the, the good thing, we're talking cities and school districts, people still care.
Yeah.
They, they do care. You talk about the federal government.
Yeah.
So a quick question, so how much does, does, do people's feelings about national issues influence? Like local, you know, opinions about local things. So for example, like, how does someone do? People's feelings about the economy, for example, this is a national issue, like affect like their view of local taxes or that?
Yeah, well, yeah, I asked. Um, we don't ask it in your surveys, simply we did have a local sales tax, do not question or any sort of part of a referendum. Uh, we work with a school district, uh, referring to Eastern Harbor. We ask the financially, I understand the, to the household is financially stressed or financially comfortable. We're not asking about income, we're asking about their expenses versus their income and how those are matched and all. Uh, that impacts districts all the time, uh, that macro level. Uh, as far as cities go, um, you know, I, working with some cities right now, local option sales tax. Um, one city failed last year simply because of the macro property tax hostility, um, that tripled down. Uh, I would say national levels don't necessarily spill over to local communities. Where you do see it is on. Um, especially in the metro area. We don't see it here, like I mentioned. You go first rate to suburban communities, um, you know, they'll look at their numbers and say, our numbers look good, but. People are having that crossover, uh, from Minneapolis and St. Paul. So it's really only the macro economy when you're talking.
Cool, thanks.
No else?
This isn't a question for Peter, but I'm a red, so I'm like, what are we gonna do with this information? So what's our?
We usually break it down into, well, first of all, it's information for, for the council to be able to have to. For decision making.
I know, where were we at? You know, where are we sitting?
Second thing we do is we typically, uh, I, I think back to when we used to have the Chaska Today. Um, we used to dedicate like four or five additions to the survey results because. To present all of this out to, uh, people all at once is really a lot. And so what we'll do is, uh, we come up with a communication strategy where we're gonna take certain sections of that. And push out, uh, different pieces of it. We're always gonna have the survey like presentation that they can come back to and see the whole thing. But as far as the information that we push out, it's gonna be sort of broke down into different categories so that we can get all this stuff out to people.
And I expect it will be a good resource for the next department head council monitor retreat.
Absolutely. I mean, that, to me, this becomes one of the key data points that we use.
Just fun listening about Todd, we should just invite him to Chaska River City's booth.
The number to the booth, it was like one.
But if you look at the, the, I looked at that too, but it was like, where do you get your information? So. I love, at first I went like, I read, where you read the question, I'm like, ah.
Is there a preference of the person?
The guy giving away the free yo-yo.
Thank you, Peter. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, uh, this is my second or third of these and it's amazing the information that you can pull out, um. And sometimes how close they are or how close they aren't, you know, that's, so it's amazing. So thank you again for. And, uh. I think of all of them, I think this one came out a way better climate than I expected. I expected to see some other. Sitting on the other side of some of these things and, and in reality, we're still sitting in a very comfortable spot, so I feel good about that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Have a good night. Thanks for being there.
Is there an action we will take on this item?
Nope.
Cool.
No action, no action. All right, uh. That's it, nothing got added. So with that, we are in other business.
Bills.
Oh yeah, how about bills?
Space them.
Anybody got a question about a bill?
I do have a couple of questions. I'll keep it, I'll make it fast here. Uh, on page two, um, there's an item for Ernst Enterprises, um, something for food shelf roofing. So the general, it was a general question related to like maintenance of buildings, assuming that was the old utility building.
Yep.
A public works.
No, it's a well. It's, it's, yeah, so that gets to answer your question, um, you, so. Uh, Congressman Wong's question was where the food shelf is, are we redoing it? Cause someday we might get rid of it. We can't get rid of it because it's our wellhouse.
Okay, so that would, so it's gonna be ours anyway.
It's gonna be ours forever, so we have to take care of it.
Yeah, got it. Um, question, page five, Chaska Commons, um. It looks like a, a, some downtown building survey implementation loan, what was that for?
That's that building, uh, two-ten, uh, North Chestnut Street, the one that has the walkway on the side that we put. They're putting that, uh, they're one of the buildings that's doing improvements in the back of the building to front on sale. And so that was, that was part of their loan.
Okay.
Their name is Chaska Commons.
Yeah, so it's confusing, it makes it look like it's up there.
That's exactly why, yeah, okay. That's exactly why. Yeah, okay. And there's part of the the downtown loan program. Yeah, okay, got it. And then, um, page seven for Donley Underground, there's a few work orders, uh, for Highway forty one, uh, Angler and Fiber for Public. Um, so the question was really about that fiber for public. Um, is that part of this new company that's coming to Chaska to offer fiber services? That's our, this is our own fiber.
So that's our, so those are fiber and then our electric lines. Uh, that's our main feeder going down Angler Boulevard, and it's getting shifted to the south now because of the county uh, reconstruction of Angler Boulevard.
Okay.
So the fiber has to get shifted too.
Got it. So.
So is all that gonna be very good?
Yeah.
Okay, got it. And then the last question was on page fourteen, uh, what's the, what's the current status of the planned uh, treatment facility? And this was because they were talking about the wells eleven and twelve, right?
Yep.
Um, so you could, I remember we had talked about a little while ago, he even looked at that, you know, some of the uh, concept plans for it.
Yeah, so that, yeah, we've actually approved all the plans for the the second water treatment plant uh, facility. Uh, before we can start work on that, uh, we have to, uh, so wells eleven and twelve are being built now just north of two twelve across from uh, Sunset Park. And we have to make the connection down to the water treatment plant. Uh, and that has to happen before we can start construction up on the new uh, water treatment uh, facility, because we're gonna be taking one of those wells out of service while we, while we build that. So the plan is, is it is uh, to be uh, next summer when we'd actually do, do the actual treatment plant.
Okay, so the treatment plant over off of, um, behind, so the other one back, okay.
Yep.
So that will happen. It's just like it pushed out a year because we need to get the wells established.
Yeah, and if you remember, we were going to do that first and do the wells afterwards. And when we had our well number four go down last summer, um, and we kept up with things, but I think it, I think it concerned us enough with the amount of water that was being used that if we didn't have our new wells online first before we took down well seven, that that could be a really big issue.
That's good. Yeah, great. Thank you. That's all you got.
There was actually a question I had as well about that. I had a question out of Hazelton, you know, at least you got that well truck, that big digging truck out of there. Trying to figure out what is the status with that.
So that's done. So they got well ten done.
Uh, right, but the whole rest of the.
The rest of it still got a lot to do.
Do they still have to dig through that open field and make a connection?
Yes.
So that has to be done yet. So there's one.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. So we gotta do that before they have any big tournaments out there.
Yeah, but that's not gonna be an issue because we'll do that next summer and their next big tournament's twenty six. K P M G.
Is that twenty six?
Yep.
Twenty nine is Ryder.
Twenty nine is Ryder Cup.
Okay. Feel good?
Yep, so I'm good.
Anyone else question on a bill? Matt, I just got one. I don't know if you know this, uh, my page sixteen, but it's probably like fourteen, but it said L D Homes, eighteen thousand dollars, it said forklift and labor services. Any idea what that was? Just thought it was weird, L D Homes. It sounded like they provided a service for us. Be nothing for the golf tournament that we are passed through, right? I don't know.
I'd have to, I'd have to check that out. Okay.
All right. Anyone else? Motion pay the bills.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Second by Councilmember, uh, Hubbard to pay the bills, discussion. Hearing that, Elise?
Yes. Yes. Councilmember Wong.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes. Yes. Right now, we move to other business. Um, let's go with Councilmember, uh, Hatfield.
All right. Um, went stop by cop, cop on rooftop. I'm sad to report for another year, there was no cop on roof. But I hear there's big plans for next year. That's are a surprise. Um, and it was nice to see, it was kind of fun this year, I'm funny about stopping by, it's always good to go. Um, they, you really have a few people from Special Olympics in Minnesota there, um, raising money and all of that. It was kind of fun this year because Eden Prairie doesn't have their own Dunkin', and while ours took a long time to get here, we do have it. Um, and it was fun to see Eden Prairie was also there, so Eden Prairie Police came and borrowed a bit of our Dunkin' and all of it goes to Special Olympics in Minnesota, so it's all a good cause and just some good, um, partnership between those two departments is just kind of fun to see. So, um, that was, that's always good, one of my favorites, even though it's early, stop by, and I feel like I'm barely weak yet, but, um, always good when it's a good cause, so. Um, and then, uh, coming up is coffee with the cop uh, on Wednesday at the North Caribou from nine to ten, which is a source of information apparently for people, so, um, good to go to. That is. And then the Clayhole Concerts continue and the Farmers Market, so those are always good to attend. Um, oh, some other events. For the rest of you, um, got an exciting email from our CEO over at Southwest Transit today about RenFest ridership. So this is the first year Southwest Transit has offered, um, rider or rides to RenFest, which parking is always miserable there. Um, and so for the first weekend, very exciting numbers, over a thousand people each day and took, um, Southwest Transit, that's a thousand less cars on the road. So Sat- Saturday was one thousand one hundred and fifty, Sunday was one thousand two hundred and four, and that's all, you know. They do all, they do all the stations, I assume. Yep, uh, Carver, Chaska, Chan, Eden Prairie. Yeah. Um, so that's great ridership grade there. Um, and I think it's extra special for Chaska, obviously it's nice for the other communities, but for us, that's a thousand less people driving through. They're still dragging through downtown, they're still seeing our downtown, but it's less cars on the road downtown, which is at times, although I think it's way better than when I was like younger even, um, it's less traffic in downtown as far as like cars sitting there on forty one. So we still get, and we get more people coming through downtown. A lot of those other communities, they come right down forty one, um, to actually get to RenFest. So that's a one thousand one hundred and fifty people that got to see how cute downtown Chaska is and what we have to offer. So I actually think it's kind of fun, um, to have RenFest being done by Southwest Transit this year. And like I said, it's their first year, so. Yeah, that's great. Um, so it was an exciting update from, from Eric today, so that I sure. Um, and that is all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Grau.
Um, I just, not too much. Uh, I just kind of comment, uh, I obviously we have the U S amateur, um, and I didn't, wasn't able to go completely myself. However, I drive Pioneer every day that week. Um, so just a amendment to the adaptations and actually a good communication plan with parking changes when I moved to the high school, and just the individuals, I mean, I, traffic flowed, right? Like, you know, I go that way, they had stops and kind of controlled traffic. It's just appreciation of everyone and the police officers, you know, being the traffic control. Um, because that's a busy road, and so that gets nervous with, you know, at one point when you start trying to have people come across it. Uh, and other than a slow, to slow down or, you know, there's switching sides that people are crossing. You know, it was just nice to see it was effective and it worked. And, um, let me get just a shout out to communication groups. Because I think it was pretty easy to find, like, okay, I can park here now, or it switched on the weekend and, you know, so hopefully people were able to to experience that. Um, a lot of people that I talked to with there and, you know, love the fact, the uniqueness of like, it's not roped off, right? You can walk right with everyone and, um, the interactions and and, you know, the connections with kids and, uh, so just really a kind of cool, fun event to to have. Um, I smiled because we were trying to figure out which big golf event will happen in our community next. We named several, right? Which is kind of a fun reality to, what's unique. Um, my son was asking about how important Hazelton is. He's like, what? Like, national people know this? I'm like, yeah, like globally. You know, it's kind of like mind blown moment. So, uh, and so connecting to that, my mind blown moment, just wishing my oldest son a happy birthday this week. Uh, super special, and I will always take this opportunity to put it on public record, that's my son's birthday. So someday when I'm really old, he'll be able to look back at this video on YouTube. That's where he'll get his information, it's probably YouTube at that point, right? Well, it'll be something else. But just wishing Elijah a happy birthday this week. And that is all I have.
All right, Councilmember Wong.
Um, only a couple of things. Um, so Chaska Farmers Market is still on Wednesdays and at least through August twenty first, which is this weekend. It's uh, from four to eight. Um, and then it shifts to a little, uh, ends a little earlier, um, the following week and the, starting the week of the twenty eighth. Uh, Toucha Truck is at Chaska High School on this Wednesday, August twenty second at five P M. So a new location, so it used to be at the community center, will be at um, Chaska High School now, uh, or at least this year. And Chaska Cares Music Festival is Fireman's Park, September twentieth. Um, one of the other things, uh, two other things, one, since, uh, Councilmember Grau also mentioned the shout out to his son. Today is actually my daughter's twenty first birthday, so I'm hoping to get out of here soon and go have a drink with her.
She's already three shots down.
So, um, that said, um, only other thing is that, um, a couple of weeks ago, I, there's something I just wanted to share because, um, that's part of, even though it's not directly really Southwest Transit, one of the things that, um, that was mentioned, um, when, um, uh, Erica, Eric was here, Eric Hanson was here to talk about Southwest Transit, last time he was here. It was the new autonomous vehicles and main mobility, right? Excuse me, but I was in, I happened to be in San Francisco a couple of weeks ago, um, taking care of, uh, some family stuff. But while I was out there, I did take an opportunity to ride the, uh, Waymo vehicles, which are in San Francisco. And for those of you who may not be aware of it, Waymo actually is a, was a subsidiary of Google that actually is running completely one hundred percent autonomous vehicles. If you ask, basically from like an app on my phone, I basically called up a Waymo, no one was in the vehicle, completely empty car pulled up through traffic. My son and I got in and we took a drive to someplace in San Francisco, like nobody was there navigating traffic and we're, you know, all sorts of weird situations and hills and everything like that, drove across town and it dropped us off. We shut the door and then it drove away, not a single person involved. And it's like, and the matter of fact is, you know, I, I think that San Francisco is a little more complex than Chaska in terms of traffic patterns. So and, you know, admittedly, we don't have snow there, but matter of fact, we've overcome a lot to be able to operate that level with like, like a lot of vehicles.
Did you go over one of the big bridges?
No, we did not go. So we only operate in San Francisco, Daly City right now. Um, but, um, it it's just one of those things is really impressive, you know, it's, you know, as time is coming. So if you haven't experienced it, it's a great thing to try out. I mean, it's like, I mean, it was like, you know, across town is like sixteen bucks and this demand pricing, so prices change as, you know, demand goes up. Um, but it was really interesting to see that this is technology, it's not, it's not some pipe dream, it's not some fantasy world, it actually is out there, it works. It's, you know, and it's a, it's a very wide scale use out there. And, um, you know, I know there's always some stories of crazy things happening, but this is technology is coming. So whether we like it or not, it will be here at some point, it's just a matter of when.
Go to number one, and I actually get to see our autonomous vehicles on Wednesday. So, yeah.
Yep, so really exciting stuff. So, but just wanted to kind of, you know, just share that because I think it's something that at some point it has a lot of things that will help the community and help, um, um, offer transit for people who just don't have the ability or access to have vehicles or can't drive or things like that. So I think it's a great option that's, um, should be something that, you know, we should be looking forward to. Um, and especially, you know, given that, uh, we have like a, a, a population will be larger and have more people who have needs for such types of transit. So that is all I have.
All right, thanks. Hubbard?
Okay, um, first I'll start with, uh, I was able to do, uh, night to night, so I popped into Officer George's dad's, uh, car to, um, go around to some parties and was able to speak to residents, and it was fun because, um, we had a blast, right? As he's walking away. It's like, I'm out.
Said it there.
But no, also, um, it was just fun to talk to different residents and kind of like the community survey, just kind of get like an ear to the ground on some of the things. Um, you know, people asking questions or just wanting to talk about some of the stuff that's coming up, you know, for Chaska and 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 things of that nature. So it was a beautiful night and a lot of fun parties, uh, so that was great.
What was the best thing you had food?
Well, we, I think, um, uh, Officer Martine, he must, Tony must have done something nice because we got the party over in, um, with the ribs, you know, that they, it's, it's the second time I've attended this party and they have the best spread. So I think some, somewhere along the line, we, we did something right to get to that party. Um, but, uh, that was, it was very yummy. Uh, I was also able to attend, um, the U S Amateur, uh, as, went, um, on Monday when they had it both at the, uh, the stroke play at the Town Course and then also at Hazelton. So I was able to, I just popped over to both for just a little bit. And I just want to thank all of the volunteers and the staff, um, that put that on because that, that was a huge undertaking. I mean, you know, you were able to know, you know, they, you know, waved you right into where you wanted to go park and it was really easy and you were able to walk around and and access the grounds and there was food and other amenities there, but you saw a lot of staff there and a lot of people helping out, a lot of volunteers. Um, I was talking to Councilmember Wong on the way up that we, my husband and I went out there on Sunday and we got there and it was literally like right at the end of like the, the second round of, you know, um, hole, and then there was the two hour gap between when they were gonna start again. So we had bad timing, but what was really neat to see, I think in regards that some of the bigger ones, like the Ryder and stuff, they, they get bust in and they, you know, there's a lot more traffic management, but for something like this, it was smaller. And so I think our local economy really got a boost because when they broke for, for that noon hour, people you know, went and they went to the food trucks that were on display, but they also left and they, they know that they were going to the restaurants and the retail, you know, over in the Commons and downtown area. Um, so that was really nice to be able to see that in action because that's not always something that gets facilitated when it's so big and they can't leave because of security. This was really great to see. Um, so I just want to commend everybody in Hazelton for, for putting on such a great, um, golf tournament?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then also, um, there's a road open house coming up on this Wednesday, the twenty first. So before you go to Toucha Truck, you can go visit the open house at, or the Arboretum, it's free to get in. Um, it's from four thirty to six thirty and they're gonna be talking about the Highway five improvement. So that will affect us, um, even though it's not technically in Chaska. Uh, and then the last thing, um, I wanted to speak on, I, I just want to commend our Chaska, um, Police Department. I saw a post on social media that talked about, um, an incident that had occurred with an individual that, uh, was at the, in the end result was having a mental health crisis and, um, I just want to thank the police for being able to, um, one, for us to have the technology capability of having a drone to be able to, be able to locate the individual and kind of assess the situation and see everything so that they felt the most prepared walking into something like that because you hear over and over again on the news, you know, that sometimes things don't always have positive results or the results, I mean, they can go any which way. Um, so having the technology in place is extremely helpful to help make our officer safe as well as the individual that was having that mental health crisis. And then also just the training and, um, the capabilities of our, our police force to be able to, you know, be there and be able to have a positive result as such and be able to help the individual. Um, that was a great story to see. That was really work at hand. Um, so I commend the, the Chaska Police, the officers that responded, um, all the officers that take the training to do such, and then also, um, you know, our police chief and Officer Panning for putting together the drone system and being able to implement that, because I think that was huge. And that's it, other than just have a great Labor Day and happy birthday to your, your children.
It's already Labor Day, isn't it?
Yep.
Hey. Elise. Matt?
I just want to thank, uh, all of our staff for all the extra work that they put in to put on a great U S Amateur. I mean, that's, the, the crew that, that doesn't always get, uh, the mo- the enough attention, but had such an integral part of this as a golf course maintenance crew. Uh, Mark Moore's crew had that Town Course looking like better and just.
I thought it all tried Hazelton quite honestly.
I, you know, it was in such wonderful condition and I could just see the pride on their faces, they're watching, uh, the players, so. So huge shout out to them, um, but also just to our pro shop staff, our police and fire departments. Um, our public works departments for department for getting things together, it was just really a team effort and just a big thanks to them.
I heard there was almost a new course record this year. So it shot sixty-one, the record's sixty?
No, the record was sixty-one.
Sixty-one.
Uh, and that was actually shot at the US Amateur the last time around, so. They actually required us this time around to increase the thickness of our rough. Um, because, uh, they wanted to make it more difficult, which it was really thick, um, so.
Those guys just, that doesn't even change them.
Yeah, I know.
They're playing it all the time.
Yeah.
All right, I, I just have a few. I know most of these have already been touched, but I, I also want to touch on the, um. US AM, you know, that was a great, I think, I haven't heard attendance. But I heard that attendance was very wild, especially that, I was out there the last day, seeing, I mean, those holes were lined both sides. All the way around the greens and their tee boxes.
We by far had more people at the town course this year than in two thousand and six. I'd say three times as.
Yeah, because they talked about the parking. The last one, they didn't even fill up the, uh, blacktop parking lot. This year they had to blacktop the grass and they had a quick scramble and fill, uh, fill the road. Because it was, they couldn't find anywhere for people to park, so, um, but it, but I agree with Matt, uh, the. The town course crew did an amazing job and, and they just smiling, loving every minute of it, cause they were, they were shining just like the city was with the course. So I, I think that that's awesome. And all of our emergency services workers that spent countless hours out there and. People are always gonna go, oh, yeah, they're on overtime, but no, but they'd much rather be home, I can guarantee you than sitting out there and. And honestly, it was a good problem, but there was probably nothing for them to do. That's, I mean, I think with the bigger tournaments, there's a lot of, there's always something happening, but for the most part, and. I, I don't think there is a lot of activity here. I know there's a number of people hit with golf balls, but that's pretty much standard, you know?
If I get hit by a golf ball, it's not, I don't consider it standard. I don't consider it standard if I get.
Other tournaments that is, yes, par for the course, there you go. But thanks to everyone, I, I, like I said, I think that we did a great job again, uh, as far as, you know, showing. Showing the world that we can put on a good tournament, you know, and, um, and handle just about anything that's thrown at us, so. So thanks to everyone for that. Um, I did, uh, get down to the ballpark today. The grass is starting to pop already at the ballpark, so that's exciting. So probably by September, it'll be, they'll be mown. Uh, not too long after that, so, uh, good to see that. I know, you know. Uh, Brian and his crew spent a lot of time down there getting it re-leveled out again and, and seeded and, um. Already grown, so it's starting to look pretty good down there. Another thing I want to comment, uh, early this morning about six o'clock, there was a house fire out in, uh, Jonathan area.
Um, hearing circle.
But I, I just kind of really want to talk about how important it was because the duty crew had just came on duty. And they, they were there and got there and that crew was able to pull a couple of lines and really hold it in check. Until the rest of the crews got there, but if that would have been a half an hour earlier. That same outcome and that, that, what I'm kind of getting at is the importance of having that duty crew available, it, it. It probably increases, uh, response times anywhere from five to ten minutes, depending where the location of the event is at. So, um, I, I, I stopped out there and the guys were out there looking to see if they could find a cause, but. Um, uh, looking at it, from what I heard about it, uh, they did a heck of a job and made a great stop with, with just the three initial guys that were out there.
They didn't lose the hall, right?
Basically the garage, but, well, it didn't have a common attic space. If it had a common attic space.
But still, I think to your point, having the duty, the speed.
It's, it's a big difference.
Fire doubles every, what is it?
It's like twice as much, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
So anyways, uh, just kudos, uh.
Yeah.
To the F D there for getting out there as quick and like I said, it was their, it's basically the, uh, the fire marshal. And, um, a couple of the other guys were the first ones on the scene, so they were able to get after it right away and, and get it knocked down, so.
So five minutes would have been like nothing.
Well, yeah, I'd probably would have been, probably would have gotten into the house. I, I doubt they can stay there because of smoke damage, but most of that can be cleaned, you know? I, I never got in the house, I shouldn't say that, but, um, they just said that there was only a couple of places that got some smoke, so. Good for them, so, um, also just want to comment, uh, filings closed for city elections. Um, we have, uh, a number of new spots, uh, worth, with candidates for. So for mayor, we have, uh, uh, Taylor Hubbard, Councilman, Councilmember Hubbard. And then, uh, George Glars. Glarus, okay? And then we, for, uh, Ward Two, we have Josh Benish. And then for Ward Four, we have Leah Shavland. So, uh, they will be the candidates. And then for people that want to get more information about the candidates, uh, we, as we talked about earlier here, it's. Information's hard to get out, but on, um, October tenth, uh, the League of Women Voters will have a candidate forum. So, uh, all candidates are invited to that. It will start at seven o'clock. It's at the event center, I think. City Hall, here, right here, so, um. So put that on your calendar for things to do and then we, also we have four candidates. Uh, vying for two spots on the commissioner level as well, so, um. Check the Carla County website for names and what, if they're a part of this forum, I think they have their own forum, so that's a different thing. So, uh, we touch, we hit Touch a Truck already. I think that's it for me as well. So next meetings, uh, our next scheduled day is, uh, the second, which is Labor Day. So now we'll be meeting on the ninth and the sixteenth, so we're back to back. Um, now that thirtieth on here, you said we might, we still might have that work session, but not necessarily a.
Yeah, I think, I'm thinking that, I'm thinking we're, we'll have the work session, but probably not a, a meeting.
So council meeting would be probably not, but a work session, so. Right, I think that's it. As, uh, someone stated here, I hope everyone has a fun and safe, uh, Labor Day. And kids are gonna go back to school, so, uh, please, if you're driving anywhere near school, please slow down. Put down distractions, drive, pay attention, so we don't have any accidents, tell everyone gets into condition of school study. And, uh, with that, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
That was fast. So I have a motion by, uh, Hatfield, second by Wong to adjourn. All the favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both hands sign. Adjourn, have a good night. Thanks for being.